Good evening and welcome to the Ogden City Council meeting for May 15, 2012. Let the roll call reflect that all council members are present with the exception of Councilmember Gockner, and she will be joining us a little bit later this evening. And now we will have -- Troop 469 is here, a great group of scouts tonight. And Taylor Connors will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance, so we'll have Taylor come up. And we'll follow his directions.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, Taylor, stay there for just a moment. I want to thank you for doing that. And then we'll have you kind of introduce your troop and tell us what merit badge you're working on, then we'll have each boy just give us their name, and we'll have them come up.
Our troop is number four -- troop number 469, and we're working on our communications merit badge tonight.
Okay. Come on up, boys.
Howdy.
Oops. I'm Ollie, and yeah.
I'm TJ.
I'm Parker Wertz.
I'm Colby Bell.
I'm Andrew Blackham.
I'm Ryland Evans.
Aaron Linford.
Ben Richards.
Thank you, guys. Now, also, I've been informed that Troop 469 may be one of the most continual, longest-running scout troops here in Ogden, which means continually they've been chartered. And so congratulations, boys, on that honor. We're grateful to have you here tonight, so thank you. And thank you, leaders, for bringing them tonight. Next on the agenda is a moment of silence. Next on the agenda is a common consent item. This is the downtown special assessment area, Proposed Resolution 2012-13, and to set the public hearing for June 19, 2012.
Mr. Chair, I move that we set a public hearing for the downtown special assessment area for June 19.
I'll second it.
We have a motion from Councilmember Hayer and a second from Vice Chair Blair to set the public hearing for June 19, 2012, for the special assessment area. This is a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next is a public hearing. We have several water rates and utility rate things to discuss tonight, so I'll turn the time over to Glenn Simms.
Thank you. Well, I'm just going to go over the items on the agenda in the order to give a little background on who's presenting and what the items are. So if you recall, at the beginning of the utility rate study process and throughout, we explained that there are several different parts of the plan that all come together to make the rate study and the rate ordinance itself. This includes the Culinary Water Master Plan, the Storm Water Master Plan, and the Capital Improvement Plan. Each of these plans, each of the master plans contribute to the Capital Improvement Plan, and the two plans and the Capital Improvement Plan contribute to the study, which then ultimately translates into the rate ordinance. So because of that, we've ordered the items on the agenda to go in the order of how each of these plans builds on the other, and then to also provide the greatest background for the utility rate study and the ordinance itself. So first on the agenda, as far as presentations go, is the Culinary Water Master Plan. And the master plan will be presented by Cliff Linford and Kevin Brown from Sunrise Engineering. The next presentation will be on the Storm Water Master Plan, and that will be presented by Paul Taylor of JUB Engineers. After the two master plan presentations, Janine Eller Smith from the council office will give a presentation on the Capital Improvement Plan. And after her presentation, Cody Dieter from Lewis Young Robertson &amp; Burningham, the city's consultants on the utility rate study, will be presenting the results of that utility rate study. And then finally, Mark Stratford from the city attorney's office will provide a brief overview of the rates ordinance itself and the proposed utility rate joint resolution. We are suggesting, as is shown on the agenda, that all the presentations take place first before the public hearing. And that's to, as I mentioned, provide the greatest background, so you can see how all of these plans work together to contribute to the utility rate study. This is the public hearing for all of these items, and we're suggesting that you allow 10 minutes per person to comment on these during the public hearing session, because there are certainly multiple items on which people can comment, so we're suggesting 10 minutes. After the public hearing, each of the items is listed separately on the agenda, so whatever the action is, you will have to take an action individually on those items, as is shown on the agenda. So with that, we'll go ahead and get started with the Culinary Water Master Plan, and Mr. Linford and Mr. Brown will be presenting that.
While she's bringing up the PowerPoint presentation, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the staff for the time and effort that they put in on this master plan. The effort actually has been going on for a little over a year in preparing this plan. And without Justin Anderson, Jay Lauder, and Steve Clark, and a number of other staff members, this would not have been possible, and they have put a considerable amount of effort into this. This presentation is basically a basic overview of the master plan itself, to basically give everyone understanding what the master plan contained, some of the background information on the culinary water system, and basically what are the projects that are needed to keep the water system up and running, and what are the existing shortfalls of the system. It also will go into the cost of the projects and the recommended timing of the projects. The master plan itself was broken down into a number of different areas. We looked at the culinary water system from a storage analysis perspective, a source analysis perspective, also looked at the distribution system. The distribution itself, we broke it down into two different separate categories, meaning the pipe age, the age of the system, and also pipe size, which is critical on fire flow issues and pressure issues. We also looked at the system not only globally, but narrowed it down locally as well into smaller components. A little bit of background of the water system itself. Ogden City has one of the largest water systems in the state. It has basically every component of a water system that you can have, from storage reservoirs to over 360 miles of pipe, which if you'd want to put that into a little bit of perspective, that's basically the same distance from Salt Lake to Las Vegas if the pipe was laid end-to-end. The system has over seven culinary water wells. It has a treatment plant, and also purchases water from a wholesaler, Weber Basin. Very large and complex system. Also, to kind of put perspective of the size of the system, if we were to build the system today, the overall investment of the culinary water system would be over half a billion dollars. Or in other words, each home and business has invested into the city over $23,000 each. A very large and complex system. Water sources is broken down into a number of components. First groundwater, which would be our culinary water wells. The majority of our water wells is found up by Pineview Reservoir, which produce 22 million gallons per day. We have one small culinary water well on this side of the valley, near Taylor Canyon, which was completed as part of the recent bond projects that produces 1.4 million gallons per day. A large portion of the summer sources is actually the water treatment plant found up near Pineview Reservoir that produces a max capacity of 13.5 million gallons per day, which operates seasonally from April, May, depending on the season, through September, October, again, depending on the weather. Ogden City also purchases water directly from Weber Basin with a max capacity of 11.9 million gallons per day, for a total system capacity of 48 million gallons per day. A little more information on the treatment plant itself. It's one of the oldest treatment plants in the state. It was constructed in the 1950s. It was the first of five treatment plants that was constructed along the Wasatch Front. The other four treatment plants have since been replaced. As I stated previously, you know, 13.5 million gallons per day, seasonal use only. Currently, since it was designed and built in the 1950s, it does not meet any current seismic standards. The storage facilities, the majority of your storage is found in the 23rd, 24th Street reservoirs with 60 million gallons of capacity. Over the last couple of years, we've actually increased our storage capacity within the system by approximately 10 million gallons by constructing the 36th Street tank with 5 million gallons, the two 9th Street tanks for a total of 5 million gallons, and the smaller Taylor Canyon tank. And the primary purpose of these tanks was because we could not access all the storage within the 23rd Street Reservoir due to its location. And then we also have the 46th Street tanks, which serves the southeast area for a total capacity of 2 million gallons. The distribution system, as I stated previously, is very large, over 360 miles of pipe. It consists of nine different pressure zones, which allows the system pressure to maintain, stay between 50 and 110 pounds. And in order to maintain this pressure, the city actually has over 34 pressure-reducing stations and four booster stations. A little more background information on the pipe itself, primarily due with age, as you can see on the chart above, over 52% of the system is over 50 years old. And why this is important is because pipes statistically begin to fail at about 50 years. And at about 100 years, over 90% of your pipes would have failed. So it's an important aspect of understanding on how old our system is and the rate that we need to replace the older pipes for. Another key component of the existing pipes is the diameter, which would contribute to fire flow and pressure issues. As you can see, since most of the pipe is over 50 years old and the standards have changed, over 55% of the system would not meet current state standards if we were to construct the system today. Currently, if you design a new water system, the smallest pipe that you can have is eight-inch diameter if you have fire hydrants connected to them. Luckily for Ogden City, they have a very good looping system, very good distribution network, so our pressures and fire flows are pretty good considering we have so much six-inch or less pipe in the system. Now kind of to the meat and potatoes a little bit of what are the issues within the city? What are the recommendations, costs, and timing? We've broken them down into four separate categories, first being the treatment plant, second being sources overall, third, storage, and fourth, and probably the biggest overall, is the distribution system. The treatment plant, as I spoke about previously, is one of the oldest in the state. It is definitely near the end of its useful life and not currently up to seismic standards. As you can see on the photos to the right, this is the current foundation and number of the walls within the treatment plant facility. You can see it degrading, and it has a lot of cracks in it. Because of when it was designed and how it was constructed, if an earthquake were to happen, the plant would be inoperable. Our recommendation is to replace the existing treatment plant. The replacement cost of the plant is $9.8 million. The timing of this is very critical, within the next three years, because if that plant were to fail, we would be unable to provide water to the citizens during the summer months. We cannot replace the 13.5 million gallons through Weber Basin or through water wells. And since it's so far beyond its useful life, we recommend basically as soon as possible on this project. The source issue overall, and we currently meet the existing needs of the city, however, the master plan projected out to the year 2050, and by the year 2050, we'll have a shortage of over 6 million gallons per day to meet peak capacity. The recommendation of the plan, after we analyzed a bunch of different options, was to drill two new wells in or near Ogden City limits. The location of the wells would be critical, moving them to this side of the mountain, because right now, the majority of our sources is actually near Pineview Reservoir, and there's only two pipelines coming down the canyon which is able to convey the water to the system. So in order to, if those were to go down or we had issues with that pipeline, it's critical to have the wells on this side of the valley. The cost of the two wells is $3.6 million, and the timing would be in the timeframe of five to 10 years. The timing was chosen, even though the capacity isn't reached a little further on, is in order to locate a water well or source, it takes a couple of years to get the right location, and also a couple of years to develop, and so on and so forth. So we wanted to have the wells up and running years before the actual need to happen needed to take place. Also, because of the location on this side of the valley, it provides additional redundancy in the system if we were to have issues with any of the lines coming down the canyon. Storage, because of the last bond and the projects that were completed, is actually in very good condition. There is two small pockets within the distribution system that does not have access to the storage that we have currently within the system. So the recommendation is not to add additional storage reservoirs, but to modify the distribution system in order to capture the existing storage reservoirs that we have. And the cost of those distribution modifications is $1 million. Again, because a storage reservoir is a health safety issue with fire flows, we recommend those projects occur within the next three years. The distribution system, we broke it up, as I stated previously, into two main components, first being the lack of fire flow and pressure issues. Our recommendation is to replace the undersized pipe in the flow and pressure areas. Now, there's over 78 different projects totaling $18 million that are directly related to flow and pressure issues. To put it into perspective a little bit, 90% of the distribution system meets current state standards on fire flow and pressure. So we're really talking about fixing 10% of the system that currently do not meet fire flow. The timing of these projects, we looked at in the first five years, spending $2.5 million per year on individual projects in order to increase the fire flow to state standards. In the time period of five to 10 years, we're basically finishing the remainder of the 18 millions, and we're able to reduce that cost to $1 million per year. The other portion of the distribution system is the age of the system. It's very critical to start a pipe replacement program today in order to maintain the system to its current standards. As I stated previously, you know, pipes begin to fail at 50 years, and at 100 years, over 90% of your pipes will have failed by that point. So we targeted basically 1% replacement of the system per year. We also looked at it statistically on the probability of failure and the dollar amount that would need to be replaced by that method. By that method, it was actually, because we have not been replacing pipe yearly, the first five, 10 years would be way too expensive for the city, so we reverted back to the 1% per year method. Now, we realized that with the distribution projects and the fire flow projects, that we are replacing pipe that are undersized. So for the first zero to five years, we really want to focus on health and safety issues, and the majority of the monies go to the fire flow projects. So for the first five years, we projected $500,000 per year for replacement projects. In years five to 10, because we've now reduced the amount of fire flow projects needed, we've increased the replacement projects. And then by year 10, we'll have completed all the fire flow and pressure issue projects, and we'll be just into a pipe replacement program, which we've targeted at, at the $3.8 million per year, to correspond with the 1%, which would basically turn over your system every 100 years. And any delay on this system would just increase the cost in the future. So in summary, on the projects, on source, we have two new wells and a treatment plant update for a total of $16 million. Storage, again, is just updates the distribution system for 1 million. Fire flow, 15, pressure, 2, and a couple of small redundancy projects for 386,000, for a total of $36 million worth of projects, not including the annual pipe replacement costs, which range from $500,000 to $3.8 million per year. In conclusion, the system's actually in very good shape overall. Your water rights are in excellent shape. Your sources, we classify as good. It would be nearing the excellent once we get the treatment plant replaced. Storage is in excellent shape, and the distribution system, with over 90% meeting state standards, would be classified as fair. The biggest issue, obviously, is the age of the system and the need to start replacing. And I guess, do we have any questions or comments? Yes?
It was reported to us that there's a line that comes down the Ogden Canyon that's been in for 100 years, and you did not address that. Is that something you did not look at, as our distribution of water coming down the canyon?
That was, that project is currently basically under design and in construction in replacing or reinforcing the 24-inch line coming down the canyon. As such, since it was already a current CIP project, it was not taken into account as part of the master plan. For the other line, that's actually in very good shape currently, if it begins to experience failures in the future, the pipe replacement costs would take into account that pipeline.
Other questions for Mr.?
Mr. Chair, just to clarify, also, that some of the costs that have been identified have been discussed by the council, and reductions or changes made that will be proposed later in the rates, I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you.
We've been working with the city for some time on the Storm Brain Master Plan. Unlike the water system, this is not a complex system. Water flows downhill, so it makes it a lot simpler to look at. That doesn't mean there aren't some issues and problems, though, so we'll kind of, we'll go through those. The objectives of the master plan, number one, was to identify any deficiencies in the existing system. Then we wanted to look at the impact of growth and redevelopment, and then we wanted to put together a list of capital improvement projects with associated costs or anticipated costs. We did those things. Some things we did not do, unlike with the water system, the existing, the condition of the existing system was a high priority in the master plan. In the scope of our master planning, we did not look at the condition of the existing piping system. And as you probably can guess, it's old. There's portions that have been in for many, many years, decades. So that is a big question that was not addressed in our scope. We do make a recommendation that as, the city has their own TV cameras, as time permits, we recommend that data be collected on the condition of those existing pipes, so that that can be included in the analysis. The other thing that's not included is water quality aspects. You may be aware that recent years, the EPA is putting pressure on municipalities to address water quality in our storm water. They would like us to have relatively clean water as it leaves the city's system. We have not looked at the water quality aspects. There is a requirement in the current permit that you have to have a retrofit plan, to retrofit your existing system with pre-treatment facilities, if you will, where it makes sense. There's not a specific numeric requirement there, but they do ask that you have a retrofit program. That was not part of our study, and we recommend that you do that, so that any projects associated with retrofitting for water quality to meet your permit requirements can be included in the cost analysis. As far as the extent of what we analyzed, the level of service that was used in the analysis included looking at a 10-year, two-hour storm event for all piping systems, and a 25-year, one-hour storm event for detention facilities within your existing system. We only looked at the trunk lines, generally 18 inches or larger. The model itself does have a few pipes that are a little bit smaller to be able to capture drainage in areas that wouldn't otherwise be captured by the model. As a result of the modeling and of the study that we did, we categorized projects into three categories, A, B, and C. Category A includes areas where the problems in the model coincided with the problems that the public services staff have found on the ground, where it showed up the same in both places. That's a majority of the projects that are included. We also had category B, which includes areas that historically have problems, but it didn't show up as a problem in the model, and I'll explain that in just a minute. And category C were areas that we found problems according to the model, that historically there haven't been problems, possible discrepancies between the model and what actually happens. And there were, there were areas that fit in all three of these categories. This table summarizes the primary projects. As you can see, we ranked these numerically based on quantity of flooding, duration of flooding. We did a numerical ranking. We also had the public services staff rank them according to problem areas, phone calls that they get, areas they perceived to be the most problematic. And then we combined those two rating systems. The highlighted column there is the compilation and how we prioritize those projects. If you look at the category column, you can see there are four projects or four areas that showed up both in the model and historically, and there are two areas that showed up historically but not in the model. Both of those areas are areas, the reason they didn't show up in the model is because the pipes were too small and it wasn't part of the model, so we didn't have it in the model. Doesn't mean it's not a problem, they are problem areas and need to be addressed. And then you can see there in the last column is the estimated cost to remedy those problems. And as you can see, if you total those numbers, it's significantly less than the water system. The needs for the Storm Brain system are significantly less. We'll touch each of these projects very quickly, so that I'll give you a quick review of what they are and where they're located. This map shows where they're located in the city relative to one another. They are spread out throughout the city. There's not a concentration in one specific area. The first The first priority is in the Five Points area. There's flooding that occurs due to water coming off of the hill down to Washington Boulevard and then trying to get it safely across that intersection and that, that busy area out through the system. As we modeled and analyzed that, there are some problems right in the intersection that, that need to be addressed. There's a couple of different systems. The proposal is to combine the systems at that point, share some facilities and build the structure that would allow water to go whichever way has the most room. That minimizes what needs to be done. Rather than upsizing two pipes, we, we were able to upsize then one line, and it turned out to be the most cost-effective thing to upsize the line down through the Fourth Street Park to the detention facility on, on Fourth Street Park. That project, the estimated cost is roughly 1.3 million. That was the number one priority. The second priority is significantly larger because of the size. We broke it up into, to three phases, if you will. They are all related. The problem primarily is evidenced along Harrison Boulevard with flooding at intersections, which is a concern for health, safety, and welfare of, of the citizens. Hydroplaning in, in storms, it is a safety issue. But in order to solve that problem, you have to go clear down to the river, down near Monroe, at the river where it discharges, and you have to upsize piping all through the system. If you just take care of the problem locally at Harrison Boulevard, it'll just push the flooding downstream to another neighborhood. To solve the problem, you have to start at the bottom and work your way back up. That's why this is so significant is because it involves a significant area in the city and, and it's some major upgrades. We're talking about some large box culverts and other things. There's evidence on the ground of these problems in that along Jackson Avenue, north of 22nd Street, if you go out, we, we tried to pull some manhole lids and, and check on some invert elevations on pipes, and we discovered that some of those manholes have been bolted down. The, the reason they've been bolted down is the system pressurizes and it pops the manhole lids, which creates another safety issue. So to remedy that, those manhole, some of those manhole lids have been, have been permanently closed so they won't pop off. That, that allows the system to carry a little bit more water, but the fact that it's backing up through there and clear up to Harrison Boulevard indicates a fairly significant problem. So we broke that project, that proposed project up into three phases. The first phase being $2.8 million, which is basically replacing the box culvert from the river up to the intersection of, of 22nd and Jackson. The second phase is another 1.6 million that includes going up 22nd Street and then down Van Buren, replacing some existing pipe with another box culvert. And then the last phase includes going up 24th and 25th Street, continuing along Van Buren. That came in at just under 1.5 million. It also includes a little piping up along Harrison Boulevard up by Ogden High School. I should have highlighted those as we went. The third priority is Ninth Street. This is an area starting at Washington Boulevard, moving west, across Wall Avenue and out to Mill Creek. There's a, a lack of a collection system in that neighborhood. Ninth Street doesn't even have curb and gutter existing, so collecting the water is part of the problem there. The, the $1.2 million there includes some curb and gutter, some improvements to allow the water to be collected and then, then piped out to Mill Creek. Priority number four, this is one of those areas that didn't show up in the model. It's a, some flooding that occurs in a, a neighborhood north of Seventh Street on Downs, on Downs Avenue, I think it's Downs Drive. I think I put that in wrong. As you can see, that one's only $127,000. It includes some piping. There's an area, because of how flat it is in that area, it doesn't drain very well. The original storm drain collection system included some piping, a detention basin, and then the discharge on the detention basin had some piping that went out to large sumps, big holes in the ground. The water would go into the holes and then it, then it sulks into the ground. That works okay for the first storm, if you have a series of storms that come in back-to-back with only a few days in between them. But once, once the ground becomes saturated, that system doesn't work anymore. There's no place for the water to go. And that's when the problems occur. The water backs up into the neighborhood and, and stands in the intersections and in the streets. Fortunately, at this point, there's not been enough water to, to overflow the, the street section and get into homes, but there's certainly that potential in a, in a large enough storm. Priority number five, this is Upper Second Street, beginning at Harrison Boulevard, actually the intersection of First Street and Harrison Boulevard. The, the existing pipe runs down behind, I forget the name of the school, but there's a school right there on the west side of Harrison Boulevard, an elementary school. Pipe runs down through the school property and then along Echols, over to Second Street and down to Monroe, where it discharges into a canal there along Monroe Boulevard. That project, we looked at a couple of different options. One was to upsize the existing pipe down behind the school and across Echols. The other option we looked at, knowing that the city is looking at making some improvements along Harrison Boulevard through there, we looked at another option of when that happens, putting some pipe in along Harrison Boulevard, reducing the costs and then coming down Second Street. So that would include some new pipe. So there's a couple of different options. There's not a, a huge difference between those options, and, and part of that might depend on the timing of when the project needed to be done and whether funding was available as, as part of the improvements along Harrison Boulevard. The sixth priority area is another area that didn't show up in, in the model because there is no collection system. This is the industrial park area out north of the airport, across 20, or 20, not 24th, 32nd Street, right there between, it, it actually ties into the 24th Street interchange with I-15. Water comes down the hill from the south down into that same interchange area. We did not estimate a cost on this because we believe the solution to that ties in with whatever happens with the proposed improvements at the 24th Street interchange, and it, it kind of all works together. So it was difficult to try to come up with a cost on that one. But that, that industrial park area has no storm drain collection system at all. Water just surface flows wherever it can find a place to go currently. That summarizes the, the Storm Drain Master Plan. As I mentioned earlier, there are a couple of areas that weren't addressed in our scope that should be considered when you're looking at, at the rates, and that's the condition of the existing system and, and the water quality side of things that are both things the, the city should, should be looking at and addressing. This is a lot simpler system than the water system, so.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. And next we have Janine Eller Smith with the Capital Improvement Plan for fiscal year 2013.
Mr. Chair, just a note, the room temperature is a bit warm. We've asked facilities to address it and they will be in just a few minutes, so.
Thank you very much.
Counsel, I'd just like to address, talk to you a little bit about the Ogden City Capital Improvement Plan. We've had several discussions about this, and just so citizens are aware, the council, the administration every year submits a capital improvement plan, and we've been talking about capital projects for the water utility and the storm sewer utility, and, but this plan actually covers facilities or capital improvements for the entire city. So it, let's see, there we go. Any, any item that's over $30,000, there's three main projects of cap, or types of, of capital improvement projects. Repair and maintenance of existing facilities, additions or renovations to existing facilities or new construction over, and these are all over $30,000. Anything under $30,000 is just considered regular maintenance, if you will, and not, not a capital project. So any, any of our facilities, whether it's buildings, parks, recreational facilities could come into this capital improvement project. And in fact, many of those projects we've reviewed with the council. We followed a little bit different process because we were sort of tracking this process with the utility rate study, and so it's taken a little longer. Normally, we would finish this process before we start the budget process, and sometimes I wish that we would have this time because it's, it's, it's been harrowing, what can I say? Two, we had several objectives with the Capital Improvement Plan. First of all, we want to determine long-term financing needs and establish a plan. And there, there, I could tell many years ago, I'm not sure that the Capital Improvement Plan was actually used that way. The council had requested the plan, and so a plan was submitted, but it wasn't necessarily something that was carried out with any sort of methodology. But in the last few years, the administration's been really good to actually present really good plans that actually set forth a plan. So in the neck, it's a five-year plan, whereas we, you know, we've been talking, the water, the water master plan, water master plan addressed to 40 years of projects. The CIP that we're talking about just covers five-year plans, but it kind of gives an opportunity for engineering and public services and, and other departments in the city to have some goals and, and to work towards those goals and carrying out these capital projects. It also helps knowing how much money we need to actually complete the projects. So the council had set some more, several goals regarding capital projects, and so we were trying to align the CIP with those goals. And also, we wanted to align with the master plans. And, and one thing that was different about this CIP is that we also wanted it to provide information for the utility rate determination. So as a result, we created, there's going to be some changes to the plan that was submitted. And in your packets, there was a Schedule A, and I'd provided some outside for citizens if they're out in the foyer, if they're interested in looking at it. And this Schedule A represents the changes. So you're going to be asked to address tonight consideration of adoption of the FY 2013 to 2017 Capital Improvement Plan. And this Schedule A sets forth the changes that will align that plan with all of the discussions that we've had regarding the water utility rate study, as well as other discussions about other facilities. So let me back up there. So we, to align with the stormwater master plan, we're adding five projects, we're amending two, and we're deleting two. And the reason we're deleting them is because they're actually already under construction with some funds that were left over from the prior bond proceeds. What's funded in FY 13, and that's generally of interest to the council because we are in the budget process, are two projects totaling about a million dollars. With the water utility projects, we're adding one, we're actually, it's a project split because originally there was the project for the treatment plant, included some additional work to do with the, the spring up there. So we split that out, and then we're amending four projects, and we're deleting six projects, again, either because they weren't actual CIP projects, so they probably shouldn't have been in there. And those, those are two projects, so that was related to some computer work that they do. And then the four projects that we're amending is just sort of to, again, align the dollars with the utility master plans. The funding for the projects for FY 13 is the $9 million for the canyon pipeline, and Councilmember Stevens, this is the pipeline you, you had questions about. It's slated for funding for $5 million in, in 2013, but that was the, under the understanding that we would fund in current year, 2012, the remaining $4 million. We have that, that funding lined up through a state revolving loan fund, but there's some hangups in the paperwork, so it may end up that all of that, that full $9 million gets funded in, in 2013. With the meter replacement, when we set the public hearing a couple of weeks ago, we had some discussions. The original CIP plan had the meter replacement spread over several years, and at council's direction, we've just amended that to have be funded in 2013 and 2014, and that will complete all of the meter replacements for the city. And then I, distribution and fire flow, if there's funds available for that, that project in 2013, that will be included. However, it's not actually slated for funding in the water utility study. We pushed that out again because council was trying to, to reduce the amount of bonding we might need to do if, if those projects were all approved. As I mentioned, those projects that I just reviewed are with the utilities. These projects are with the general fund. We asked the council to rank the projects that were presented by the administration, and the top three were boiler placement at Union Station, a land purchase for a fire station, number three, and repairs to the Lauren Farr Pavilion. Actually, since we have received the budget, all of those have been, are recommended for funding in the FY 13 budget. And community plan projects, this was a new category that we discussed last year. The council was interested in addressing some of the plans, projects that had come out of the community plan process that community development manages. These projects, these were the top projects that the council had picked, Bonneville Park improvements and various sidewalk projects, and turns out that those are all funded. So, I don't know if you have any questions? The action would be to adopt the, clarify, there is a, a substitute Schedule A to make sure that we got those changes in that the council had asked for two weeks ago when you set the public hearing. So the, the action would be to adopt or not adopt the, the Capital Improvement Plan with the substitute Schedule A. Questions? Thank you.
Next is the consultant, Cody Dieter.
Grateful, as always, to be back with you again. I feel like a citizen of Ogden, up here.
We can handle that.
What I would like to present tonight is information that has been presented to the council in the past, but for the benefit of residents, we'll present much of this information again. And to start off our presentation, I want to briefly review a graph which we've shown to the council and the public in the past, but I think this helps color some of the discussion that is occurring tonight, specifically with the master plan projects that have been presented. This graph represents, on the bottom is the number of years that a piece of infrastructure has in the terms of its useful life. This assumes that a piece of infrastructure has a 50-year useful life, and over time, the cost to replace that piece of infrastructure or keep it or extend its useful life is represented by this blue line. Over time, infrastructure fails and, and this requires more, more money to extend the useful life or replace that asset. And one of the things that often happens, or one of the ways that you can fund that infrastructure over time is to have an equalized rate in real terms, meaning you've pulled out inflation, to have an equalized rate over the entire life of, of that infrastructure. And in that way, you collect sufficient funds to both extend the useful life and replace the asset at the end of the planning period or the end of the... the asset at the end of the planning period, or the end of the life of that piece of infrastructure. What usually happens, because it's challenging to push rates upward, is you often, in the first few years, will have a lower rate set aside for capital improvements. And then, over time, as your system ages, which is this orange line, you start to see some small increases as you see some need. And then, you reach the end of the useful life of the asset and realize, wow, this really needs to be replaced. We don't have a lot of choice in the matter, and therefore, rates at that point have to climb significantly in order for you to have enough revenue to cover that piece of infrastructure and replace it. And I think that's a helpful thing to keep in mind as we talk about the rates and specifically talk about what's happened in '07 and what is being proposed tonight in terms of increases in the rates. The things that I would like to address tonight is this concept of a comprehensive financial sustainability plan. And aside from trying to sound really verbose and use a bunch of words that make me sound smart, this really is a process that we think aligns the goals that have been outlined from the master plans that were prepared and from the capital improvement plan, which were adopted, or which are being presented tonight for your approval, and also the policy goals, which have been discussed by the council over the last six months as we've gone through this rate study with you. So, we wanted to find what that comprehensive financial sustainability plan really is, and then talk about how that was then applied and used for the culinary water utility, the sanitary sewer utility, the storm drain utility, and then give a summary of how this impacts everyday users of the utilities that the cities provide. So, first of all, what is a comprehensive financial sustainability plan? The concept behind that process, and which ultimately comes in the form of a document, which I have here, which is available to the public, is to make sure that your system remains functionally and financially viable. So, in other words, the master plan has been provided to show how it can functionally continue to provide what that utility needs to provide, and then our role is to show what the financial impacts are of keeping that system up and going. So, again, it begins with the master plan that talks about functionality, then it moves to the capital improvement plan, which has just been presented, which is the first phase of implementing the recommendations from the master plan. Then, there's been policy development, which you have, which I mentioned briefly a moment ago, that has been done by this board and with the steering committee and with citizen input and outreach. And then, the heart of our, Louis Young's purpose is to show the financial modeling, what revenue requirements are going to be needed now and in the future to meet those policy goals and funding objectives. The next step is to talk about the rate structure. Once you've determined how much revenue needs to be brought in to cover these goals and planning projects, how are then you going to recoup that revenue from individual users? So, this is really talking about how much should be in the base rate and how much should be in the tiers, if that's an appropriate way of doing it. And then, finally, we'll show for each of these utilities, what's the sample set of users, and how does that affect these sample users? So, first, let's talk about the water, culinary water system, culinary water utility. As has been presented from Cliff this evening, there was a master plan provided, fourteen, forty-three point three million was recommended in the first ten years, and then the modified CIP that was presented for the next ten years would anticipate forty-six point seven million of infrastructure, which is slightly higher. There's an increase in the treatment facility cost and a decrease in some of the other projects for distribution and fire flow, which were pushed off, mostly pipe replacement. Some of the key policies that were identified by you council members as we've gone through this process is, first of all, discussion of financial ratios. How do you know if your system is really financially in good shape? And some of the key ratios that are used in the industry, both from water users, from American Water Works Association, from rating agencies who give you, for lack of a better word, a credit score on any debt that you issue, these are ratios they use. The first one is a measure of your cash reserves. How much should you really have sitting in the bank for a rainy day fund? And the way that the industry discusses this is they use the term days of cash on hand, which is a measure of how long your system could function if you receive no new revenue today, from today going forward. And what was determined in, by this body, is that you would like to have a hundred and fifty days of cash on hand, operating cash on hand as a cash reserve.
Can I ask how much that is?
How much money that represents?
That. And my next question would be, in cash reserve, if we have it already in sewer, does that relate the same with water? Or do we have to have both? We have to have it in both accounts? Or would one suffice?
It makes sense to have your utilities function as standalone systems, so that they can function.
But I'm saying for bonding, let's say, for bonding.
Well, you would combine, to figure out the days of cash on hand, you would combine all of your expenditures, all of your operating expenditures for all of the utilities, and divide that by the amount of total cash reserves you have. So, yes, it would impact that, but you also have to add in the expenditure side and the cash balance. So, it does impact that, yes, if you're bonding. Because right now, all of your bonds have a lean upon the net revenues from all of your utilities, all of the utilities we're presenting right now, water, sewer, storm drain.
That's because they stand alone. Sewer stands away from water.
On your books, it does.
On the books, okay.
Yes. In terms of the actual pledge on your debt, you've combined the pledge. So, you've promised to the bondholder, hey, if we don't make our debt service payment, then you have a lean upon our revenues from all three of those separate utilities.
And the bonds weren't for the separate utilities. It's all been rolled into one amount.
Yes.
So, that liability is shared among all of them.
Yes.
It's pooled among all the utilities.
For the current debt that you have outstanding.
Yes.
And that would be prudent to continue to do that, because you already have that structure in place. But to answer your question about the amount of cash on hand that would be represented by a hundred and fifty days in fiscal year 2013, based on the projected revenue, which we are suggesting you would need, about five, around six million dollars, a little less than six million dollars.
Mr. Chair, also, just to clarify, that you, as a council, have been considering each fund separately in terms of the policy and the number of days of cash on hand. So, as will be presented, it will be presented independently for each one as a policy decision.
Question that's come up repeatedly, and I just think it's interesting that the public know that that's part of this issue, is what we have to have in cash reserves for our sewer and our water, all three, so.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
With the present situation, how many, how much money do we have on hand at the present time, then?
In your water utility?
Uh huh.
It's estimated at the end of this fiscal year, you'll have around six million.
Okay. But today, do we, today, do we have a hundred and fifty days of cash on hand?
Yes. You're projected to have that at the end of this fiscal year, yes, based on your current amended budget.
If we looked at it today, is that still a hundred and fifty? Or is that less?
It would be estimated, if you had the six million at the end of this fiscal year, when everything gets trued up, in terms of your accounting, you'd have a hundred and eighty-seven days of cash on hand.
Okay.
And that would be July 1st. So, I mean, we're pretty close.
Pretty close, yeah.
July 1st, yeah. So, we'd have a greater than a hundred and fifty days.
Yes, you would. But that leads into the other discussion about the second ratio of debt service coverage, which is the amount of revenue available after you operate your system to then pay debt service on your bonds, to pay your debt. And the more, the higher coverage ratio you have, the more financially strong you are as an entity. So, right now, what's being proposed is 1.5 times debt service coverage. So, for every dollar of debt payment you have, after you operate your system, you have a dollar and fifty cents to pay your debt. And this is a way of showing, hey, we have enough revenue coming in that the bondholders do not need to be worried, that we are not going to make our debt payment. It helps you also know that after you pay your debt, you have fifty cents, in essence, to use, to either put in the bank for operating reserves or to build capital infrastructure to make sure your system remains viable in the future.
Cody, ideally, wouldn't we want, like, two times?
Yes.
Isn't that the, so we're sort of a little under that right now?
Yes, that is correct. Yeah, it's been determined that to, I think, to speak for the council and what you've said before, it's practically challenging maybe to push that up to two right now because of the, what might happen to the rates if you do that. They have to go higher than they currently are anticipated to rise. A few other policies that have been discussed are the annual, an annual rate increase that matches the Consumer Price Index, the CPI. It's currently in your rate ordinance now. We suggest that that continue, so that will naturally keep up with operational inflation that will occur in your operating expenditures. Also, in the past, you've adopted rates for five-year periods, which ensures a strong planning horizon, and we think that you should continue to do that as well. Some additional policies that are included in this comprehensive financial sustainability plan, a waste mitigation policy, which is that you will discuss, you'll have a fifty thousand dollar expenditure per year on an education program or a marketing program of ways in which citizens can reduce, and corporate citizens can make sure they're not wasting water, they're using it appropriately. And the second waste mitigation policy is a conservation tier structure, which basically means every couple of, you'll have tiers where the water gets more expensive as you use different blocks of water. So, from zero to six thousand, there'll be a dollar per thousand gallon charge, and then the next level, there'll be another charge that's higher than that, to encourage people to make sure that they're not wasting water. The final policy is a rate consideration policy that to make sure there's not a large jump at any one time, that you have a five percent cap on the rates, rate increase every year, which would happen before the inflation factor would go on. So, in this presentation, we're suggesting you'll need a seven point eight percent rate increase in, to have enough revenue in fiscal year 2013. Two point eight of that rate increase is the Consumer Price Index for last year, and five percent would be for other purposes. So, the financial modeling, which we have put together and worked through with you and with the staff, suggests that in fiscal year 2013, as I just mentioned, you need a five percent rate increase plus a two point eight percent, I should say, a five percent increase in revenue. That's probably a better way of stating that. You'll need, in total, a seven point eight percent increase in revenue from last year in order to have sufficient revenue to meet all of your objectives and all of the capital projects which we, which have been identified. And then, the rate would be seven and a half increase next year, six percent in 2015, and then two point five percent or going forward. And again, the caveat, this entire line, other than the two point eight, will be whatever the CPI is. So, it could be higher or lower depending on where the CPI actually lands every year. That would give you sufficient revenue to meet your objectives. This line item is one way of looking at revenue in a more tangible way, total rate per equivalent residential connection per month. So, in the master plan prepared by Sunrise Engineering, they put forth how many equivalent residential connections that the city has. So, every one, every five eighths and three-quarter inch connection is one residential unit, and then they do a mathematical calculation based on usage in August of 2010 to determine how many, how the commercial, all the commercial entities' usage would be, again, compared to one equivalent residential connection. So, that number is then, the total revenue of fourteen point nine million is divided by the roughly twenty-six thousand ERCs, or equivalent residential connections, and simply tells you how much revenue you would need per ERC per month, which is forty-six point
Your calculation, then, Cody, for this is it's only going to be a seven point six or eight, I can't, seven point eight percent?
Seven point eight.
Is that what you reckon, that's what you propose for this next rate increase?
That's what we're proposing.
Got a lot of numbers floating out there, you know, that everybody's been saying, well, it's going to be fifty percent or thirteen percent or whatever. So, that's what I want to know, is that's what you're proposing is a seven point eight?
Yes.
Starting July 1st.
July 1st.
And then another, and another, and another.
Yes. That is correct.
And the two point eight is for inflation?
Yes.
And I think the council said two point five. We didn't want it to exceed two point five. Am I correct?
You can see that on this graph, two point five going forward.
Yeah. But it should be two point five, shouldn't it, for thirteen and fourteen? Well, thirteen it is, but two point.
Thirteen, two point eight.
Two point eight.
That's the actual CPI. My understanding of the direction that we received was that estimating in the future, we should use two point five.
Okay, so you're saying this year is going to be two point eight?
Yeah, we already know that that's what it is.
Okay. I just.
Upcoming years, it's just projected, but it'll be an actual figure when we get there.
And so, that two point five will change, and it may go up or down depending on what the Consumer Price Index is.
Yes.
Well, I think since this is confusing to most people, that it's important that it be said exactly what the rates are going to be and how they're going to go up and why they're going to go up. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification.
Another question, maybe a clarification, is that the percentage that you're showing here, is that going to be applied to the base and the tiers? Is that how you're going to apply the increase? Or how does it get applied? Maybe that's something that ought to be.
It's a great segue into the next slide.
Okay, great.
Yeah. Well, I'll skip that slide, so we can get to that. Once you, the previous slide was intended to show you how much revenue, how much increase in revenue you'll need from year to year. In essence, we're saying you're going to need a seven point eight percent increase in revenue from fiscal year 2012, based on your budget, and that's been trued up, based on actual figures. That's what you're going to need, seven point eight percent increase to fiscal year 13. And now, the question is, well, then, how are we going to generate that revenue? As Councilmember Heyer mentioned, do we just want to apply seven point eight across the board to every user, both in the tiers, keep the current structure we have in place, and just give everyone a seven point eight percent increase? And it was determined that we would find a different way of doing it, to make sure that the rates are equitable, that people who are using water pay for their fair share. So, this slide is intended to discuss that, how is revenue generation going to be derived, the base rate versus the tiers. So, the methodology that was determined is that we would just figure out how, the amount of the base rate for one standard connection, one standard ERC, based on, I believe the council direction that I received was thirty-seven point five percent of the forty-six dollars per ERC that we would need should be in the base, and that the rest would be generated in the tiers or the usage amount. So, that's what we used. And if you do the multiplication, that comes out to seventeen dollars and fifty cents per ERC or per one standard connection. Then, we looked at all of the usage data for 2011 and determined.
So, why didn't we look at other years? 2011 was not a normal water year by any means. And so, why wouldn't you look at, say, a five-year period? Or if you're only going to look at one year, why wouldn't you look at a year that had normal precipitation? Because last year was not even close to normal.
Sure, very valid question. I think there's two answers to that, or two, yeah, two answers to that question. The first is, prior to 2010, you had a different system in place to collect, a different billing system in place to generate the information necessary to know how much usage occurred. And the information that was used previously was vastly different than what's in your current system. And so, the information wasn't really comparing, unfortunately, apples to apples. There was certainly a discrepancy.
Yeah, I realize that, but I just have some concerns. If you're basing your assumptions for this rate study on usage for a year that was not normal, I just fear we're back to the same problem we had with the previous rate study, where it's just flawed fatally.
I think the reason that using 2011 is a good idea, in my opinion, as a professional, is that it was a wet water year. And when you're setting rates, it makes sense to err on the side of caution. You want to make sure that you collect sufficient revenue to meet your objectives. You wouldn't want to be in a position where you, for example, said, let's try to collect the average, and then there's some variance. There's always going to be variance in how much revenue you collect, either up or down from the average. You wouldn't want to base your rates on an average, which would give you less revenue in that year and thus require you to raise your rates higher than you are currently contemplating.
I would rather have to go back and raise the rates if we find we're not charging enough versus charge people far too much and find out that we've really screwed it up. Especially, you know, with this economic climate and the rate increases that people have already shouldered. have already shouldered since 2007, I just, I don't feel good about charging people too much and then, you know, worrying about it in the future.
Question of her, her thought was, how did we do in 2011? Did we get enough revenue, or because it was so wet, did we come short?
I haven't compared your budget to, to your actual figures. So to answer that question with precision, I certainly couldn't do that.
That would be, you know, one thing that I think we could.
Well, and I think that would be a relevant question we should have an answer to because.
One other thing, too, which will tie into Councilmember Wicks, is as a council, we've really found it important to implement these new meters so that we can get some good data. It's been really hard to manually go back in previous years, get data, and that's what's been part of the problem five years ago, is it was really hard to get just good, solid data. And we are trying very hard to put in these new digital meters that will give us good data that we can pull out and say, here's exactly the data what we need. And unfortunately, we haven't had that available to us.
Yeah, that's a good point.
But I also think that it's the council's responsibility to look at this again next year and decide if there's too much money in one fund and not, you know, how do we regulate this so it is balanced? And the only way to do that probably is to charge this current rate and then look at it.
But my concern is that we do that, we overcharge people, we have to come back a year later. Do we pay another consultant another $74,000 to come back and look at it?
I think we can look at it and know whether we overcharged or not.
I just think we need to get it right from the start.
Well, it's built into this whole project that we evaluate it every year.
It is.
Within the ordinance that it will be evaluated yearly.
It's in the ordinance that we look at it every year.
But if you're basing your whole scheme on some numbers that aren't usual, I just have some real concerns about that. I don't think that's wise.
But I don't know how you find any other, any other numbers. Does anybody else have a better answer for how you find the numbers? I think that's our issue, is that we don't have the capability of doing anything any different at this point.
But we know what typical, I, I think we, we can probably, you know, find what typical usage patterns are. We have the old data that lists the type of user, the type of connection, how much water they've used. We have that going back. It's not, it shouldn't be that difficult.
As I mentioned previously, the, we looked at previous data, and the average usage was significantly different under the old data collection system than what it is currently under the new system. It was so different, it was on the magnitude of 50% different. The average was, you know, either twice or half what it is currently, and so we just didn't feel there was a lot of confidence in that data.
But if you're looking at 2011, that's not a typical year. I mean, if you were comparing that old data to 2011, of course it would be off.
How about 2010? So, I mean, we were on the new computer system for 10 and 11. How did 10 and 11 compare?
I would have to look at the, at the data one more time, but it seemed to me that it was fairly, especially on the commercial usage, it didn't change with any difference. So when we talk about the, the ERC methodology of figuring out how much usage per category of connection for commercial usage, there wasn't any statistically significant changes in usage. And that equates for roughly 50% of water usage in the city.
I guess the other challenge is, I don't know if we ever have a usual year. I mean, we, we have a cycle and.
Come up with averages. I mean, I just, I think everybody recognizes 2011 was not a typical year by any means. You had people who probably, you know, didn't need to water their lawns for a long period of time.
So the commercial would be about the same for both years and?
And residential usage on, when I looked at the data last, I, my recollection is that 75% of the usage for residential is indoor usage. And then you have 25% of it that's outdoor usage in that four-month period, roughly when, when the winter, when summer comes on. And so is there, is there validity to the fact that, that last year, there was probably less water usage, probably, but it represents maybe less than a quarter of the actual usage?
Kind of what happened last year is we just didn't get it as early. We didn't have to start watering as early, and I think it was probably roughly about a month.
Or as much. I mean, the ground was pretty saturated.
Putting up, what kind of.
Depends on your discipline, too, on your sprinkling.
So with the, the one-inch, the one-inch meters are on residential units, yet we're counting them as 1.66 ERCs, yet in the engineering study, they're counting all residential users as one ERC.
That's correct.
So why do we have the higher number there?
The reason they have a higher number there is they, they use more water on average than a, than one ERC, which is a five eighths and three-quarter inch user. And so they have a higher impact on the system than a standard connection. And so that does, there needs to be some evaluation of that extra usage. So that's why that was pushed up to 1.66.
My understanding is that the base rate today is $14.99. Is that correct?
Yeah, 14.98, yes.
And under the proposal, it's 17.50.
That's correct.
Yeah. Would it affect anything if we went to maybe 16.50 or $16 a base rate?
It certainly would affect things, yes.
How would that do?
No.
Okay.
It's, it's an 88 cent increase, basically.
Well, I imagine the revenue, the base rate of the revenue would go down because we're, we're collecting less money, and so we'd have to readjust maybe the tiers.
Yes, you would.
To make up that difference there.
You, yeah, she would have to do that.
But the, with this percent of 7.8%, would that still hold if the rate, the base rate was not to 17 point, $17.50?
Yeah, yeah, because that 7.8% is really the, the amount of revenue increase that you need from fiscal year 12 to fiscal year 13 in order to meet your objectives. So that's not going to change unless you changed any of the master plan, CIP, or any of your policy goals.
So it's important that we collect enough revenue to pay our bills and the costs that it is to operate the water department.
Yes, definitely it is. That should be your main objective, one of your main.
So it doesn't matter if our base rate is lower, but our tiers would have to be higher, but the same percent of 7.8% would be the same.
Yes. One thing that would happen if you chose to lower your base rate is, the lower your base rate goes, the higher your financial risk is of collecting sufficient revenue to meet your objectives, because you have a greater amount of variability on usage, on the revenue being collected from, from usage. So there's a significant change in usage. If your education program is very effective, you could have the, the impact of pulling down your revenue in a way that you didn't anticipate.
Less water use then, is what you're.
Yeah, you could have less water use, which would translate into less revenue. So, yes. Press on. So culinary water, the rate structure that was put into place or what we're proposing is, is a tier system for those with secondary, a tier from 0 to 6,000 gallons, which is the average usage for a standard connection, 6 to 12,000. 12,000 is the average usage based on state standards. And then anything above 12,000 gallons for indoor use would be considered wasteful usage and would have a higher, would have a higher dollar amount. Then for those without secondary, you'd have the same price schedule for the first two tiers. From 0 to 6,000, again, is, is your average indoor use. Then from 6 to 42 is the, the average usage based on a third acre lot in the summertime for outdoor usage. And this third tier was proposed to capture those who have a larger than a third acre lot, assuming that they may use more water than that. So it was doubled to account for larger lot sizes. And then anything above 84,000 gallons would be considered likely wasteful usage, or you'd like to encourage less usage on those higher amounts, and would be at the $3, which is the same dollar charge for the overage in the, in the first tier. And then the commercial would have one, one usage rate of $2.30 per thousand gallons.
That starts.
First gallon they use.
You know what the current commercial rate is right now?
I've forgotten it.
So the more water the commercial user.
$2.23.
$2.23.
Okay.
So the more water a commercial user uses, I mean, obviously, the more they're going to pay.
Yeah, the more they're going to pay. Yep, that's correct. So here are some rate comparisons based on, so this could be your estimated utility bill for water only. Not to be confused, your current utility bill comes and you have sewer, Central Weber Sewer, you have several line items. This is just isolating the water, culinary water charge, based on different connection sizes, those with and without secondary, and then the commercial usage sizes. And it's based on the average usage for each of those connection sizes. There's a larger chart found in the document that we've prepared, so you can look at different amounts of usage rather than simply the average use. But for simplicity in showing a chart, we didn't want to put up there something in font size four or something that no one could read. But that's available if people would like to do that.
But Cody, I think the thing that people are not understanding maybe is the fact that we're giving them an extra 3,000 gallons because we were going zero to 3,000. Am I correct or not? And now we're going to 6,000. In my water bill, you know, just as an average, we use about 2,600 gallons straight across, but I have secondary water. So I would never reach that 6,000 threshold, which would up my rate by $4.78.
That is true.
So I think it's, it's important that people understand that there is a base rate of $17.50, and then there's your water charge above that for the water you actually use in your home. So that's where you could really conserve if you chose to.
So just for an example, the five eighths or three-quarter inch usage, 2012, your average bill would be $20.72 based on 6,000.
6,000 gallons.
Yeah, if you use 6,000. In your case, it's going to be less than that.
Because mine, right here, I've got my bill with me, and it was, this month, it was $17.79 just for water.
Okay. So roughly $3 of that, well, $2 of that was for usage.
Yeah, for usage, but, yeah.
Yes, that's right.
So even if you conserve, you only save a couple dollars?
Yeah, you probably would save a couple dollars, but still, you know, I think about the, maybe someone who's living alone, who isn't going to use a lot of water, and, you know, $2 is $2.
But the base rate should be a bit lower, I think, if we're going to make it truly fair. Because when you figure what somebody who really is a true low user, like that pays per gallon of water, it's insane.
And that may be true, but the fact is, you've got to pay for this bond debt, and there's no other way around it, and everybody has to pay. I mean, it's not something we can, we can put on anybody else. We, we have to bear that ourselves.
Yeah, recently, I feel like I've done a lot of user rates in the last couple of months. I feel like the undertaker everywhere I go. I say, it looks like you probably need to push rates up, and no one likes me, which is okay. But that's what you need to do to have a good functioning system.
Okay, so under these rates that we're proposing, what percentages of the city's water revenue would be coming from the residential customer and what would be coming from the, the percentage from the commercial?
Sure, that's a valid question. Right now, the report we've prepared, the information we've derived, it's, it's roughly 50%, but it's, it's going to vary based on usage, that, you know.
So it isn't a true 50/50?
It's within a 5% variance. It could be plus or minus 5% in our estimation. Because one, one thing that we're, that's always an uncertainty is, how, how many users are you going to have each year, which generates your base rate revenue, and then how much usage is going to occur, which is an even bigger variable. Because the change in users isn't, I mean, you're going to have some change in users, but you're always, the wild card is how much usage you're going to have. And so our analysis does have a 5% variance on both of those amounts. And so it's roughly 50/50, but it's like, one thing I do know is, at the end of the day, it's not going to be perfectly 50/50 when, when we drew this up.
Really, there's no system is there to keep it at 50/50, is there?
It's, you can only do your best analysis and have, push the variance down as much as you possibly can, which we've pushed down to 5%.
And Susie, this will be one of those things that will be very important to look at when we review this.
When we review this, that's what I.
Every single year.
See where the money, who's paying the most.
And try to chew that up as close as we can.
Yes, that's, that's right.
Commercial and residential.
Yeah. And if you chose to change the policy for some reason, then you could, you could modify that as well. It's very much a policy issue, so. All right, moving to sanitary sewer, oh, sorry. Ms. Lewis would like to add.
I'd like to get a word in.
Sure. One thing I think it's worth mentioning, and I couldn't figure out how to give Cody the baseball sign and remember to, you know, from over there, is that, you know, you did just touch on the fact that there is no way anyone, I don't care, anyone in this room can predict what your water usage is going to be. We can't determine whether, we can't determine who's going to conserve water. We can only make a reasonable estimation based on the data that we have available, aiming to hit the policies and decisions that you have helped to guide and direct. And if, because, as Cody indicated, because there's no way to know who exactly is going to use how much water in any given year based on things that are out of everyone's control, like the weather, if you happen to get, you know, depending upon where you're sitting, because you pay rates to, if you're lucky enough, if you will, to maybe collect a little bit more, and, you know, some of you are concerned about, oh, my gosh, I've put too much of a burden on those constituents, please do not forget, your capital facilities for your treatment plant are not going to go away. So that extra money can go toward that project. You will have to bond less, and, you know, we know that people get criticized all the time about, you have to bond, you have to bond. Well, we looked at, as you know, these rates for no bonding scenario, and you saw what they would have to be to try and raise that much money in three to five years' time. It was.
Like 90.
Yeah, it was off the charts. So if you do collect, so let's assume that it is a hotter year, people do use a little bit more water than they did last year, and you collect an extra $1 million. Well, you're not going to flush that down the toilet, no pun intended. You are going to set that aside in your capital facilities plan. When it comes time to, you know, actually construct that very much needed, non-earthquake sound treatment plant, that money will go toward that, and you'll be able to borrow less. Additionally, you can look at those rates next year, and instead of the 5% projected increase based on projected water usage that we know we can't hit 100%, you can reduce that to 3% or 2% or whatever. So my main point was, don't forget that gigantic capital facilities need staring you in the face, because if you do happen to collect a little bit more, because no one can predict this with 100% accuracy, there is a place for that money to be spent. End my piece.
Thank you, Laura. Let's move on to the sanitary sewer. The master plan identified, or prepared by JUB engineers, identified $1.2 million. Sorry. I was skipping ahead to storm drain. There is no master plan currently for sanitary sewer. It has not been prepared. So I didn't award it to JUB on accident. But the city identified in the CIP, $1.2 million worth of projects over the planning horizon, and additionally, we've inserted 2.25 million of unplanned projects just to prepare for the, there's likely going to be some projects based on the age of your system. There is a master plan scheduled for 2013, which will tell you the condition of your system, and then you'll have real projects rather than just fill, fill numbers. Some of the key policies, these are very similar to what we showed in the culinary water, rather than, because these, the sanitary sewers has a more healthy fund balance, it's determined that the cash reserve should be 365 days of cash on hand or one year's worth of operating revenue, and that the debt service coverage ratio should be higher at two times, which is much more healthy and will likely result in a better bond rating and lower interest costs, which saves money over the long run.
And Cody, with that, the cash reserves and the debt service coverage, what is the average or the standard that most bond institutes want you to be at?
For a city of your size, they would like to have this, 365 days of cash on hand and two times debt service coverage.
And that same thing goes for the water rate also?
Yes. That would be the ideal and get you the lowest borrowing rate. That's correct. In an ideal world where people didn't actually have to pay you money, pay money, and it would be painful, that would be what you would just simply do without thinking. The same policies of the annual rate increase of the CPI and the adopted rates for five years were also included for the sanitary sewer, and the same rate consideration of 5% rate increase before inflation. The one change to your current. The one change to your current system for sanitary sewer is linking to indoor water usage, linking that to the sewer charge, so that you can measure how much water is actually being used. Right now, it's just a flat fee for a residence, and then there is some usage for commercial. This just allows an opportunity to link the commodity that you're providing, treating sewage, with how much people are actually using. So what's proposed is that you'll look at winter usage, which is, should be indoor usage for an account, determine how much usage is occurring, and then determine a rate based on that. So the financial modeling which we prepared, the rate increase that would be necessary to fund the capital, which is a very skinny capital budget at this point, would be no rate increase for capital or other projects and simply the Consumer Price Index increase over the planning horizon. That would generate sufficient revenue to meet your current objectives. The graphical depiction, the green line with this left axis represents the rate change. It's just 2.5%. You see, you've had big rate changes in the past. This red line represents the percentage of rate increases that has occurred in the past, which is because of the Central Weber pass-through that has occurred. And now you're saying that you're not going to need that going forward. Even though there is a rate increase from them this year in 2013, you've chosen to absorb that and not pass it directly on, so to speak. Then, because you're moving to a tiered structure, the difference between the base rate and the tiers, very similar methodology was used to determine the base rate for sewer, which is 27.50, which is about 10% of the revenue collected in the tier and 90% in the base rate for one standard connection. And then it goes up based on the multiplier ERC going forward. Then the rate structure for sanitary sewer, anything above 6,000 gallons for residential usage, which should be considered the average indoor usage for one ERC, one standard connection, there's no usage for below that, but above 6,000, you have a .35 per thousand gallon charge above that $6,000 amount. And for commercial, there'd be a .35 per thousand gallon charge from the first gallon that they use.
I just have a quick question, and that is, I see you're doing an estimated bill, but what percentage of the water revenue is going to come from the base rate? And then how much is going to come from the tiered?
In the sewer?
Yeah.
Or in the sewer? It's based on 90% coming in the tier, in the base, and 10% in the tier. Again, with a 5% variance in connections, a number of connections in the actual usage. But there's much more certainty there because it's only indoor usage.
Can you tell me that for water rates, how that would work?
What we've assumed is 37.5% and-
Good. I just think the public needs to know that.
Sure.
37, isn't it 37.5% or something like that?
Yeah, and then 62.5%.
Yeah, it's going to come from the base rate, and the rest of the revenue is going to come from the tiers.
37.5% will come from the base, and the rest will come from-
So that depends on the water usage?
Yes.
Commercial or residential?
Yes. And it does create some revenue instability from a planning perspective because so much of it is pushed to the usage amount. Where in sewer, it's very much matching your fixed costs with what's being collected in the base. Therefore, if usage changes, it's going to have a much, it's almost going to match. It's going to, because your costs will go down because they're using less. And so therefore, you're collecting less, so it's more efficient. But there's some practical limitations to doing that in culinary. So the rate comparison, most users will see a decline in their sewer charge, with the exception of the 3-inch connection, which is, in the past, based on the actual usage, showed that they were receiving a bit of a benefit. They were paying less than their usage actually depicted. And then users who use a lot of indoor usage for residential in these areas, who use a significant amount, will also, for indoor usage, for whatever reason, I don't know why that's occurring, will also be paying more than they are currently paying, currently charged. Because right now, you're paying a base rate regardless of if you use one gallon or 10 million gallons.
I don't know if you know this question. Are most of our small businesses in the 3-inch or are they in these other categories?
That's a very good question. All the information I know is that 1.5 inch to 8-inch are commercial meter sizes.
And small businesses may be on a smaller residential. I mean, it depends on what their building was originally built for and what their use is and-
My concern, if they were in the 3-inch, that would be a problem in that aspect there.
And one option, of course, all users have, if you're in the commercial, is if you have a 3-inch connection, you'd have to do the math to make sure it made sense by replacing it, but if you really didn't need one, if you're really using a lot less, you could potentially change meter sizes. But again, that's anecdotal. I don't know if that's practical. This just brings it in line to their usage pattern.
So we're still collecting most of the, I mean, most of the revenue is coming from the base rate?
Yes, that's correct. Yeah.
Which I think it would be more fair and equitable if we lowered the base rate and made up more in the usage charge. It's a small change, but it's not that big of an improvement.
Thoughts on this?
Well, it is a policy shift and always evaluate it.
Yeah, it is a policy shift, but it's really not changing people's bills for the small residential users.
They really don't have any projects that are going on in that aspect there, but that'd be a possibility.
Well, and if we're charging per thousand gallons for water, why don't we charge per thousand gallons for sewer instead of including?
All right, moving on to storm drain. There was a master plan prepared by JUB, which you just received a presentation upon a moment ago. They're recommending $12.2 million worth of infrastructure over the next 10 years, and the city CIP matches that infrastructure recommendation. And again, this is a condition, not a condition assessment, but capacity assessment. Some of the key policies, these are the same force as with sanitary sewer. 365 days of cash on hand and a debt service coverage ratio of two times. And the same policies are also in place here, annual rate increases at the CPI and a five, adoption of the rates for a five-year period. Again, the rate consideration of 5% rate increase cap before inflation. Again, because of the, because of the good fund balance and the health of this, fiscal health of this fund, we do not believe it's necessary at this point, based on the information we have, to have anything, any rate increase above the Consumer Price Index would be necessary to fund your objectives and capital at this point. With the assumption that 4.5 million of funding would come in 2014 to cover some of the projects that were outlined there in 2014. And that's a total of an estimated $17.8 million bond. Most of that is going to the water fund to cover the treatment facility.
Is it based on ERC or an ESU?
This is based on an ESU. So this is an error to have ERC, and I apologize for not catching that. But it is based on an ESU, which is an equivalent surface unit instead of an equivalent residential unit, so. It's another way of converting a large, commercial lot size down to what is the impact that a single resident has. You can see in the past, there was an increase in the rates previously, and we're assuming there will not be any rate increase currently based on the current information. And talking about the revenue generation, this concept we've been discussing in the base and the tier, there is only a base rate in storm drain because you're not providing any commodity. You're simply collecting and distributing water usage. There's nothing that people can really do to control that in the same way. And again, it's based on an equivalent surface unit. So the rate comparison, 2012, a rate per ESU was $6.91. There's a 2.8% rate increase to a $7.10 amount per ESU. So it really, and it depends on your lot size, if you're a commercial entity, how much, how many ESUs you equate to, to which you equate. So in summary, to ensure the functional and financial viability of your system, make sure it operates, make sure it's fiscally healthy, provide the services the utilities are meant to provide. The rate increase where, that we believe is necessary, an example, for a 5/8 or 3/4 inch, that's 6,000 gallons usage average per month. 2012, your estimated total utility bill, all of your utilities, would have been roughly 75.53, and in 2013, it will be 79.38 based upon these assumptions, which is an increase of $3.85 or a 5.1% increase. Granted, that's one small sliver, an example of one small sliver of your bill, but that's an example of how it'll affect the majority of your users. That is the information that I have for you today. I'd be happy to answer any questions before we move on.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I think, Mr. Dieter, you were going to clarify some information that may have been confusing to our citizens with regard to the number of connections.
Yes, you're right.
Please?
That's correct. Maybe we can go back to the slide I didn't think about? Yep, thank you, Amy. That's a good point, Bill. I apologize for skipping over that. The master plan upon which we base the equivalent residential connection calculations, there's 26,000 roughly equivalent residential connections based on one snapshot in August of 2010. And this information of the number of connections here, if you were to multiply, you know, this times this to see how many equivalent residential connections your 2011 connections would be, it is higher. And the reason for that is this assumes all of the connections for all of 2011 instead of just a snapshot of one month in 2010. And so there are some connections in this, in this category, which may not have been there for a full year, and we assumed that they were. And so that these numbers are slightly inflated because of that. I don't believe it has any significant impact upon the analysis.
As long as you're clarifying, you know, we had a rate increase last November.
Yes.
Did you use those numbers in this study?
Yes, we did. When we met with the Comptroller's Office, they took the budget for 2012 halfway through the year, made some modifications to bring it in line with what actually had occurred to that point. And then that was the, that was the budgeted information on revenue and expenditures that we used in the study. So yes, that was used. So if a person were to look at the 2011 budget or the 2012 beginning budget, it would be different than the numbers we show because it was trued up by the Comptroller's Office to reflect actual usage, actual collections and expenditures that occurred. Any additional questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stratford?
Chair, members of the council. First of all, mostly what I am here to present is just the layout of the proposed ordinance and the proposed joint resolution between the council and the mayor. The purpose of the ordinance is really to take all of the information that's been presented by a financial consultant and figure out how to put that into words as far as how that affects people's rates. One, a couple of things to understand about that. First of all, obviously, in 2007, the council at that time, in order to provide funding for the $50 million water and sewer bond, made some substantial changes to the way that water fees were collected. And one of the choices, the policy decisions at that time, was that different classes of users would pay different base rates. That is, if you had outside secondary water, you paid a different base rate than if you didn't have outside culinary water. There was also the tier structure that was put in place, and oddly enough, those two classes of users used different tier structures. And those two fundamental things were part of what drove the need, or I think the request, to look at rates currently and come up with a new ordinance. In addition to the fact that in 2007, the additional funds that were raised by those five years' worth of rate increases paid for what was accomplished with the $50 million in bonds, but didn't provide a base to pay for the additional improvements that have been described in the master plan that Sunrise has presented tonight. And so as you look at the way this ordinance is structured, there are a couple of things that the council wanted to see happen, and hopefully it reflects that, although maybe not to the degree that some people might like. That is, for example, the base rate for everybody is now the same. Whether you have outside irrigation water or not, during the winter months, well, your base rate actually is always going to be the same. And there was also a reduction. Before the tiers, there were between three to six tiers or four to six tiers. This proposed ordinance reduces the number of tiers. One of the things that I think needs to be pointed out about, there's been some concern raised about, well, do we have enough information, do the consultants have enough information about usage and everything else for these rates to potentially be a problem or to be unfair? I think it's helpful if you compare the existing range of costs for tiered water with the proposed range of tiered costs. So our current ordinance, if you don't have outside secondary water, your tier runs between $1.34 per thousand gallons at the bottom to $3.19 per thousand at the top. If you do have outside water, your tiers actually start lower, $1.8 per thousand gallons, and end lower, $2.79 per thousand gallons. And the proposed ordinance, everybody's going to share similar tiers, although people without outside irrigation, they get to the higher tier slower than people, excuse me, people, yeah, without outside irrigation, they get to the higher tier slower than people with outside irrigation. But it ranges between $1.50 per thousand and $3.00 per thousand. So I think, based on that information, you're unlikely, at least certainly with residential users, to find massive differences in their bills compared with what happened in 2007. Because in 2007, the top penalty tier was a couple of dollars per thousand gallons higher, I believe. It was a number that was substantially higher enough that it really caught people off guard. But people have been using the tiers for five years, and the tier structure that's being proposed in the ordinance today is actually somewhat more compressed than it has been in the past. And so people will see changes. They will see an increase in their water bills in all likelihood based on the fact that the base rate is higher and based on their usage. But I think, given where we've been, our track record, it's unlikely in those residential settings to really be surprising to people. Something else that you'll notice, as I said before, if you didn't have outside irrigation, your top tier was $3.19 per thousand. If you did have outside irrigation water, your top tier was $2.79 per gallon. That's a split of 40 cents per thousand gallons between those two classes of users. The proposal here is that everybody will pay the same top tier of $3.00 per thousand gallons. Now, if you were to look at that in terms of how does, how does that affect people's bills, naturally, by having a single top tier, if you were to put that on paper, you would see that the people who use or who don't have outside irrigation water, they won't have as big of an increase as people who do have outside irrigation water because we're equalizing that number. And so that's one thing, another thing I wanted to point out, that I'm not quite sure if it came across- if it came across to members of the community exactly correctly. In this very first year, not everybody's going to see the same 7.8% change in their water rates, or in their sewer rates for that matter. That 7.8%, to be, and Cody did clarify this, but, but is a, is a system number. Last year, we had X number of dollars in the system. In fiscal 2013, we needed 7.8% more, we need, you know, this much in the system. But because we've gone through and changed the way the base rate is calculated, changed the way that those tiers are structured, there will be individuals who see more than 7.8% increase. And there were people who see, some people who will see less than that. And particularly with regard to businesses, depending upon their usage, they will see differences in that very first year. Once we've gotten through the first year, then, then rates will, as they go up, they will be pretty much straight across the board, assuming you've used the same amount of water. But if you're using the same amount of water each year, your rates then will be consistently changed. But in this first year, there will be some people who have higher increases and some who have lower increases. Another thing that the ordinance, what the ordinance tries to do is it lays out in the preamble some of the goals that the council was hoping to achieve in adopting this new rate structure. And one of those goals, actually, and it's already been mentioned, is that, so Sunrise Engineering proposed a certain number of projects to be accomplished in the next five years, and they assigned a category of price associated with that. The council felt like that that was a very burdensome, when you, when you looked at all of those costs and you figured out what was going to be the charge to the residents, that that was going to be difficult. And the council said, okay, we understand that the treatment plan is a significant issue, and it needs to be replaced as soon as possible, so we will do that. But you did ask the city engineer to provide an alternative to spread some of those other distribution, fire flow, and storage costs over a larger period of time. The state, the city engineer did that, and essentially took a 10-year plan that Sunrise Engineering had, extended it to a 12-year plan. But two things happened by doing that. First of all, the city engineer said, okay, Sunrise has identified specific areas, kind of like on that map where Cliff showed that there were certain points that were really important to accomplish certain projects. That spreading to 12 years does accomplish all of the specifically identified projects, but it defers approximately $10 million in general water maintenance funds to the future. That is probably something that the water department can figure out how to try and deal with as we go forward in the future, but I think this goes directly to Ms. Lewis's point. If, if there is, and it's not that these rates have been rigged to try and generate extra revenue, but if extra revenue is generated that's not anticipated, there's $10 million in improvements that have been suggested for, for completion, that we don't know when we're going to be able to actually deal with those. And so if we have some extra money, we can, we can start to address the master plan in a more meaningful way. The other thing, and I think I've already kind of touched on it, is had to do with the outside irrigation and dealing with those people. And so the, the rate structure tries to do something that I'm not sure it happened very well in the original 2007 ordinance, and that is to actually use state standards for what people, we would expect people to use for irrigation water on their lots. And so now, the tiers for those without outside irrigation are designed to say, okay, we, we're going to try to anticipate that we want people to have green lawns, and we want to set aside enough water in their tiers before they get to that $3 level that the ordinary person could keep their lawn green. And so that's the, so the tiers, you'll notice, for those people are bigger than they were in the past. Goes up to 42,000 gallons, let me see if I make sure that's correct, for, for most, well, for everybody, goes up to 42,000 gallons. And that takes care of kind of the, the normal-sized yard, and even a slightly larger yard than normal in Ogden City. And then there's another tier, even before you get to $3, that allows you to get to 84,000 gallons per month. Again, allowing for somebody with, with over a half an acre to irrigate based on state standards without hitting that top tier. Now, if you have a bigger lawn than that, or you irrigate more than that, you are going to pay that top tier. But, but that is what the ordinance is designed to address. One other thing I noticed in the discussion, and that I just wanted to point out, is there was some discussion about the ERC concept, and, and if a 1-inch meter, you know, is considered residential, why are they paying 1.66? You actually already have that in your base rate, not necessarily 1.66, but 1-inch already pays a higher base rate than 3/4-inch. So that's not really a deviation from the way the ordinance is currently designed. And then probably the last thing, I think, that I wanted to talk about on the ordinance had to do with your desire that individuals who are deployed in the military to areas that have, that are combat zones be given a bit of a break. And so there's, if that person either owns the property, or is author, or is renting a property and is authorized by the renter to pay the bill, then they can bring in the information to the water manager and get a 50% deduction off of the base rate. They don't get a deduction off of their usage, but they do get a deduction off their base rate. And that is a slight change from two weeks ago, because at that time, we hadn't quite written it correctly to make sure that renters who were authorized to pay the bill would benefit from that, from that reduction.
Mr. Stratford, I believe that's a proposal for a substitute in the ordinance. Is that correct?
I'm not exactly sure how that's been presented.
It is a substitute.
Yeah, it's a substitute, okay. Thank you.
And it's been distributed, and there were copies in the, out in the foyer.
Yeah, if people in the audience receive that, you'll see that that's the area that was highlighted in yellow. There was a page 14, and it might not make sense if you didn't understand what the issue was, but, so what it had said before was, any residential user who is the account owner and who is currently deployed. Now, the yellow language that's highlighted says, any residential user who is the account owner or who is described in our ordinance as a renter who's authorized to pay. So as, as a substitute, that would be, yeah, that would be correct. So I think that addresses most of the items on the, the resolution for the water rates themselves. The other document that--
I have one question about that. Not that it would be abused, but wouldn't you want to make sure that that person that was deployed was named on the lease?
Sure. They, they either have to be the account owner or the spouse of the account owner, or the person--
Or the person, but it doesn't mention being named on the lease.
When they come in to sign up, and the landlord says, I authorize this person to pay the bill, the landlord says who it is in that authorization, and certainly the water utility manager.
I, I understand that it just would be nice to have a lease on file, just so that we know that that's, because I could see somebody saying, we have somebody who's deployed, we're going to get a discount on the rate for that. I just would like to see a lease on file.
Right. And I think the, the utility manager will make sure that happens. The other thing they have to make sure they provide, they can't just come in and say, I'm getting deployed.
Yeah, I realize that, but I also would like to see some proof that they actually are somebody who is obliga, you know, who is living in the residence and is somebody named on the lease.
Well, our water manager's here, so I'm sure he'll make sure that when people come in that they provide that information.
Okay. If it's not in the ordinance, will they collect it?
Sure. Yeah, they, they require all sorts of information when you sign up for your account. And so I don't think that that's at all out of the ordinary that they would request that information.
I think that's important.
Yeah, I mean, it's just making sure.
And that would be, you know, about $100 a year for the person deployed?
Yeah, based on, if you're paying $17 per month, you're getting us a $8.50 break per year, so, yeah, right.
Not a huge amount.
Right, but it's, it is at least something.
Nice gesture.
And it's a nice gesture.
Thank you.
It'll be a bit more.
Any other questions on the ordinance? Okay, the point of the joint resolution is, we were developing the ordinance, we realized that the ordinance really is a short-term document. It addresses, how are we dealing with the current situation? How are we going to deal with the next few years in rate collection? And as we had talked about, the bigger financial principles that Cody has outlined, then thought was, okay, we need a joint resolution between the policy-setting body, as the city council, and the implementation body, the administration, that says, we need some common kind of goals and principles that will help us to not have to have extraordinary rate increases in the future. And so the joint resolution just took all of those concepts and tried to bring them into that document that are more long-term concepts. And I'm not going to go through each one of them, with the exception of one that I, that I didn't talk about before, and that is that occasionally, a fund may have more as it's waiting to commit to projects. It may have collected money that we know is going to be spent a couple of years in the future, but we are aggregating that for a large project, we're trying to go through a master planning process, and that fund may have actually accumulated more than it needs for the 360 days of cash on hand and the two times debt reserve coverage. And in those cases, it would be appropriate for a short period of time to loan money to other funds that gets paid back so that it will be available for those projects. And that's, that's one item that's in the joint resolution. All of the other things we talked about, revenue sufficiency, updated master plans, capital reserves, those are also all included in there. So that's all I have on the resolution, unless you have any additional questions.
Further comments? Thank you, Mr. Stratford.
Mr. Chair, a question whether or not you want to take a quick break now or after the public input?
All right, we'll go now. So as was explained in the opening, this is a public hearing, and we have adjusted some of the rules to allow you for 10 minutes, and please respect that time. And we'll receive public input at this time, and then following that, we will take a short break before the new business.
Thank you for the opportunity of being able to say a few words. My name's Devon Nelson, I live at, on 1250 South, over there near the mountain. And it's been very interesting here, and they finally got into the subject that I'm interested in. About a year ago, there was a lot of talk about extending secondary water to those of us who don't have secondary water. Now, there was a lot of talk about it. What happened to it? Was it just talk? Because one of the big concerns at that time, and one of the, before jumping in on this master planning process, was that all this culinary water was going on people's yards. And if we could just take care of that or reduce that, then it would change the, it would change the outcome of this master planning process. But I haven't heard a word about that in this little exercise here today. I note that the example that was given for our utility bills is about $78 a year, I mean, excuse me, $78 a month, and yet that is for those with, with secondary water. Now, it would be, that number would be multiplied for those of us who don't have secondary The other thing, I, as I understand it, you said the base rate for those of us who water outdoors, and I don't know of anybody who waters indoors, who irrigates indoors, but that, that, that rate for us is going to increase. That we're going from something like $2.78 to over $3.00 for the base rate, as, as I understood what you were telling the, the council at that time. So, does anybody, does anybody know what is going to be done for those poor souls stuck with, without secondary water? Nobody knows? Does that mean nothing is going to be done?
Well, what we're going to do today, Mr. Nelson, is take comments--
Okay.
And then after the comments, we'll have some people address those questions that you have.
Oh, I'm glad to hear it.
From administration, okay?
Excuse me? Okay, I didn't get a, I wasn't here right at the beginning. The other, next question was, how many of you, and you can, this could, this could be, this is easy even, this, this would be very easy. How many of you don't have secondary water? Oh, that's, that's good to know there are a few allies floating around. Well, again, thank you for this opportunity. I have to comment. I think this is a, I think this is an issue that, for a master plan, doesn't seem very masterly if it doesn't touch on this, if it doesn't touch on this aspect of our water needs and issues that we have here in Ogden. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening. My name's Mona Lisa Wald, and I live at 553 East, 1100 North. And I'm here to represent the people, hopefully, in the north end of town, north of the ATC. And I just have a couple of things that I'd like to address, and I'll apologize for you now because I will have to go, since I have little children being babysat by my husband who is not very happy to be there. I am not from Ogden, I'm from Salt Lake City, and so we moved here in 2006. And it was not, did not take too long until we realized that something was going on with the water rates, and we weren't sure. It was, it was kind of like buying brownies on the moon ice cream, where you're thinking you're getting brownies, and you keep digging and digging, and there is something wrong, there's no brownies, and you find out you're getting ripped off. And you're like, I'm not getting the product I thought I was getting. That's how I've felt for the last five years or four years here in Ogden. I've seen my water rates increase and been feeling, you know, as I'm talking to family in other parts of Utah, boy, you're paying half of what I'm paying, and how is that happening? And so I felt this whole time that I was being ripped off, and I wasn't sure why, although I, I do know that in the north end of town, the Ron Clair area, we are constantly having patchwork done because of these old pipes that you're talking about, and that is a constant concern up in our area. And I have seen the true color of water that we drink, and so, since I've learned that I no longer drink it, in all honesty. I either buy my water, or I go to the North Ogden Fountain, which is a great resource for us in that north end of town. Having said that, as a customer, I feel that one thing that you could do to help us understand what is going on with our water bill is just have more transparency on the water bill itself, just a little more clarity. I had no idea until tonight that there was even a rate, a flat rate of $15, for example. I do not mind forking over $20 a month in behalf of the infrastructure of Ron Clair Neighborhood. Or if you ask more of a certain area, you know, this area needs it, fork over whatever is needed, $5, $10, I'm happy to do that. What I'm not happy to do is to hear rumors, I don't know if this is true or not, but that we are subsidizing people on the east bench, people's secondary water. I don't know if that's true or not. But if that is, and I just am requesting some fairness in, you know, in being built. I don't want to pay for other people's water, let them pay for their own water. And from the conversations that I'm hearing here tonight, it seems like you're a little hesitant to raise water rates. And from being, you know, for being in Utah and in the western states, I think you need to start treating water as a little bit more of a valuable necessity, a precious, you know, resource that we have, and not be afraid and not be apologizing to the citizens of Ogden or anybody here for the water. We need to treat it with more respect, and with that comes certain responsibilities from residents, and if they need to be more responsible in using their water, then they need to learn a lesson. Right now, I do not feel that there is enough incentive to save water. I could waste water, and it's about $2 or $3 more, or $4 or $5, you know, in, in places with drought conditions, which is Utah, you know, the, you pay for your water if you're going to waste it. And in my opinion, I think you should be happy to bill people who are wasting it. And I like everything that this gentleman has said over here. I think it makes sense, and I think that, you know, you really can raise your water rates. Having said that also, as a customer, I would ask for a little bit more quality in my water. I am concerned that people are dying in the water we're drinking. And I'm concerned that, in all honesty, the color that I saw when our pipes broke was, was more than scary. It was pretty disgusting. And so-- And so, I've seen your reports for how the contaminants are below EPA standards, and I think that's wonderful, I think that's great, but it seems like that was more of protect-your-butt type of thing, and a legal action needed to communicate with the citizens of Ogden, that these are the possible contaminants that are entering into our water, and we are complying with it. But on the other hand, it did not assure me as a customer that I'm getting clean water. Everything you wrote on that pamphlet that is on the Ogden City website just made me worry about what is in our water. And then, you're probably compensating it with the chemicals needed to make it look pretty, to make it smell good, and I'm noticing that I'm getting dizzy when I shower. You know, those are some of my concerns. Then on a last note, I would just like to bring to your attention that there is a very high water table in the north end of Ogden, north of North Street. There are people constantly pumping out water from their basements because they're flooding. That is a source of water that, in my opinion, is being wasted, and I think there could be additional research on behalf of Ogden City to see what can be done to maybe use that water resource for secondary water, or perhaps for other uses in cases of emergency. And that's about it, I think. Anyway, thank you so much for your time, and good luck with everything.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I have some handouts for the council. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Judy Watson. I'm at 1785 29th Street, number 303 in Ogden. And I thank you for taking time to listen to your constituents this evening about our very real plights with regard to Ogden City's water rates. We represent the Skyline Towers condominiums located at 29th Street and Buchanan Avenue. Skyline Towers is an eight-story building housing 45 privately-owned condominium units. We're fortunate to live in such a nice neighborhood, but we work hard at maintaining our property according to the community standards, which is difficult because we have to use culinary water to do so. We've repeatedly requested secondary water and have been repeatedly denied that privilege, although we've never been told why. And even though it is supplied to our neighbors on the north and west, as well as to the Mount Ogden Golf Course to our south, and kind of adding insult to injury, our property borders a holding pond for secondary water. I live on the third floor, and I look out over this pond half of the year. And just a few feet from the edge of our driveway is the connecting mechanism for secondary water, which our neighbors all use, but we can't have it. I was looking at my tax bill not too long ago and noticed the line item about Weber Basin Water. So, I called the tax office to find out what that was, and was astounded to learn that we pay specific taxes to support the infrastructure that takes secondary water throughout the city, and now you're going to be raising our rates to update that system. So, we have to pay even more to supply to others the very water that is denied to us, and that's kind of hard to swallow. In 2011, we paid a total of $9,348 for water. That's almost $10,000 just for water for our building. The 7.8% increase adds another $729.00 a year. Based on the projected increases published in the newspaper, that would add $1,406.00 per year to our water rates over the next three years. Yes, we do live in a very nice part of town, but many of us in our building are on fixed incomes, and therefore, our financial resources are limited. And many of our residents are in their 80s or 90s, they don't have the opportunity to go out and maybe get a part-time job if need be. So, increasing our rates to such a degree, we think is a terrible thing to do to these senior citizens, most of whom have lived in Ogden their whole lives and had their careers here. To conclude, let me just say that we feel it is very unfair that we must pay a much higher rate than the surrounding properties, and respectfully request that we either be granted the use of secondary water, or be given some relief from the financial burden, which is going to become even heavier with the increases, or possibly arrange for a reduced rate during the watering months, if that is a possibility with the system. And I thank you for listening and for your thoughtful consideration of our requests.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Virgil Blanchard. I'm representing the families that live on 2132 Fowler Avenue. I put out a sheet for the neighbors to sign regarding our water, our sewer, and also the damage to our street because of the sinking water line. And I think that we need to have some sort of, some sort of information available to us, and we need to know that we're not going to sit here for another, I've lived there since like 1985, and I've never seen anything done on this block as far as dig up the pipe, put a band patch on it, so it's patch after patch after patch. The sewer line is the same way. It sits in water underneath the sewer line, which I don't know if it's sewage or if it's groundwater, but to me, I see a possibility of contamination between the sewer line and our street water, our main water supply. There's less than 10 feet between them, and it's kind of scary. Most of the people in my block are retired, they're elderly. We don't have a flat piece of ground on that street. I have people from, you know, bus drivers, the mailman, UPS drivers, everybody that drives that street continuously every day, and they all say that, in their opinion, it's the worst street in Ogden. And if there is a hole, we patch it ourselves, which I feel is kind of not right. We pay taxes, we should be treated that way. So, we also brought in, my wife and I also submitted a signature list, and I'm not sure the amount of signatures exactly, but I believe there was probably close to 100 on that list. Those are just the people that live there and the people that use the street continuously. And we also submitted photographs showing what the street looks like. The east side of the street is sunken. When there's nothing going on, we have water in our gutters. Our meter boxes are full of water, and we don't seem to get any relief for it. When I've called and asked about it, they say, oh, we'll do an investigation, and nothing has ever happened. We had a water leak at the end of the street on 21st and Fowler, and there was a geyser coming out of the center of the street. I called the city, they say, well, it sounds like you need a plumber. And then, I call them back, and I says, hey, this is something that's happening in the street, it's not somebody's faucet. And they say, well, we'll see that an investigation takes place to find out what's going on. We'll send somebody right out. 11:00 in the afternoon, or the morning, they finally sent somebody out to figure out why the water's shooting out of the middle of the street, and that's another band clamp, another patch. This line is trash. So, I think if you got copies of the statement that the neighbors and myself and my wife have made, along with the photographs, you could see what we're talking about. And it was turned in to the city engineer, and I believe somebody else in the office had received it and also signed that they did receive it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blanchard. We'll have representatives follow up with you.
Hi, my name's Daniel Morris. I live at Canyon Park Condos on 12th Street. I'm a friend of Virgil's, and just to amplify some of the things, it was a petition that we put together, and as he said, that there was people from all stratos society. We had everything from a constable to UPS to the postman. Other things that he didn't say was that the sidewalks are so bad that he's had to pick up elderly people that lived there and that they're now deceased, but they were in a motorized wheelchair, and the thing tipped over, and they weren't able to get up. He just happened to be outside, and he went out and picked up the wheelchair and got them back in it. I was a missionary for two years in Mexico, in southern Mexico, and these streets looked just like southern Mexico. It's a shame. And I just hope that somebody is able to, you guys, we tried to do the right thing, we didn't want to blindside anybody. We talked to the city managers, we talked to the guys that are running the facilities for engineering, so that everyone was on board, they didn't feel like that, they had a chance to know what was going on, and gave them the photos. And I mean, we were up here last week to present that to the mayor's office after Cindy showed the pictures and things to the proper authorities. She was on the phone for about an hour and a half to the folks, so that everyone knew what was going on, so that we could get this fixed. Those folks are too old, they're living on that street, to be able to continue to live like this. So, thank you very much.
Mr. Morris.
Hi, my name is Stephen Thompson. I live at 729 25th Street. I want to start out by just saying, I don't envy the job that's been put forth before the city council on this water bill issue. I believe it's a very difficult decision for all of you, and everybody concerned throughout, when I say everybody concerned, I mean, everybody that lives in Ogden City is going to somehow be impacted by this issue. Excuse me. I started out with, I was asked to, by a number of people, to get feelings on from citizens of Ogden about how they feel about the water rate increases and stuff like that, and I've taken that very seriously. To date, I've spoken to over 300 people. So, one gentleman in particular has some interesting views, and he couldn't be here tonight, and he wrote a letter for me, and I don't necessarily agree or disagree with everything in the letter. The letter's been passed out to all of the council members, and I believe the mayor got one. Some of you have spoken to the gentleman in question, his name is Eric Stein. Eric Stein is a production manager down at Alsko Lennon here in Ogden City, so he's a fairly educated individual, but he's highly opinionated. His opinion has rang true throughout most of the people that I've spoken with, either, you know, not necessarily everything that Eric thinks, but, you know, everybody pretty much agrees with something that Eric thinks. And unilaterally, people are opposed to an increase in the water rates, from what I've seen. So, I'd just like to quickly read this letter to you, so that the public can hear what Eric's got to say. "Dear City Council Members, to those of you who returned my call, thank you. Currently, there is a proposal to raise our water rates, and yet again, I emphasize with the position that the council finds itself in. It is unfortunate that our water infrastructure has been ignored for so many years that now it is in a crisis. However, as a taxpayer and a water user, I must say that raising our rates is not an option for you to consider. I have spoken with several hundred people, and the majority agrees that although we recognize the need for upgrades, we are not willing to see our rates raised again in 2007, or raised again, period. In 2007, my Ogden City bill averaged $40.00 per month. In 2012, my bill is averaging $78.00 per month. You have raised the rates on my household 95% in five years. This simply cannot continue. If recent trends continue, by the year 2017, my bill will average $152.10 per month. Your citizens can no longer afford more increases. It is time that the city operating costs be significantly reduced to accommodate our infrastructure needs. As a businessman in the private sector, I have watched while the city has, in numerous people's opinion, mismanaged our funds. This is not fair to the taxpayers to continually ask for more money. BDO funds were to be used for infrastructure. The junction was supposed to generate revenue for the city. I have watched over the years as Ogden has continually given away the farm, i.e. Goodsky Lake, to attract due businesses, which provide very little return on our investment, if any. It is important that you all vote no on the proposed rate increase, and instead, find other ways to fund this. Ogden already has some of the higher water rates in the state. I am an expert in cutting costs. I can easily cut 4% to 5% from every city department. I'd be very happy to volunteer my time for this, and the city's current department managers are unable to do this. It is very painful to do this, especially in the public sector, but it is commonplace in the private sector. Everyone feels its pain, and we're asked to do more with less. Many of the people I have talked to would rather see non-essential services eliminated entirely, and if this does not generate enough revenue, then it's time to reduce essential services to adequately cover the repairs needed. Also, it is my understanding that Ogden residents have come up with an alternate, an Ogden resident has come up with an alternate plan that has not been listened to because he's not a paid consultant. Sorry, folks, but Ogden cannot afford any more consultant and attorney fees. We have plenty of talented people within our community that would be more than willing to help. In private enterprise, I learned quickly that listening to our employees can generate immense cost savings. I have friends that work for the city, and they all tell me that it is not in their best interest to speak their minds or provide ideas. Perhaps the department managers need to brainstorm with their employees rather than discourage their input. Please, as council members, do the right thing and vote no to the proposed rate increase. Demand from the department managers that they cut 3% to 5% from their operating budgets. They will all complain and say this cannot be done. However, as I mentioned previously, I would be willing to work and volunteer my services for this. If a department manager refuses to do this, it is very simple, get new ones. As a council, you all have fiduciary duty to the taxpayer. It will be much easier to cut services and programs now than it will be to do so later. Best regards, Eric Stein." As I said, I don't agree, nor do I disagree with everything Eric said. I think you folks are challenged tremendously. The only thing I would ask is that you ask yourselves two questions on the issue. One would be, is this good for the city? And the second question would be, is this good for the taxpayers? And if you can't answer yes to both of them questions, I would ask you to please vote no on the proposal, and try to find another means of resolving the issues. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. Mr. Schroder.
Good evening. Dan Schroder, 1444 Binford Street, and thanks once again to Amy Sue for putting my slides up here. I'm not going to share, I'll try not to share too many opinions with you tonight. I think you already know what my opinions are. Instead, I would think I'll try to stick to the facts and try to maybe summarize what I see as the big picture with this proposal, and I'll try to cut through some of the uncertainties and obfuscation as best I can. I'll stop it for you. Pause. I even allowed extra time for your setup there for you. Thank you so much. So, the first question I asked myself, or I think many of us are wondering about, is how big is this rate increase that we're talking about? Is it 7.8%? Or is it 13%? Or 18% or something? It's really hard to calculate that number, as Ms. Lewis said, and the calculations are long and complicated, and there's different ways to do them. And as I was doing these calculations, I was reminded of a professor of mine in graduate school, the great Savas Demopoulos, who taught quantum field theory, and whenever he would come to a real hard part of the calculation on the board, he wouldn't do it for us on the board. He would say, that calculation should not be done in public, meaning that we should all go do it in private, of course, which, of course, we had to do. So, I'd encourage you to do some of the calculations in private, and I'd be glad to show you in private how I did the calculations. I'd love to sit down with the private how I did the calculations. I'd love to sit down with the consultants and hash it all out with them. Um, but for tonight, I'll just tell you the results. The answer is 11%. Uh, between the rates we're paying now and the rates that are being proposed tonight, the overall across-the-board average rate increase for all Ogden water customers comes to 11%. I'm pretty confident of that number, maybe plus or minus one at most percent. Um, however, that's not the number to compare to the 7.8 because this number does not include the increase we already had in November, nor does it account for any increases in water use for one, from one year to another. Um, the 7.8 is compared to the budget number for fiscal 2012. And when you compare it to that and actually calculate the projected revenue, I'm still estimating that the projected revenue will come out about $1 million ahead of where the consultants say it needs to be. Um, as for what that money would be spent on, of course, 17% of it would automatically be skimmed off to the general fund. And last time, the city had a big surplus in its revenue in, over, based on the rate increases from the last few years, most of it got soaked, most of the rest of it got soaked up by increased operating expenses. So, I'm not convinced that any surplus would be spent on capital projects. Maybe it would. Uh, the next question is, well, okay, some people get bigger rate increases than others. Who are the winners? Who are the losers? Here's the graph that answers that in detail for the people with smaller connections. It says residential. That really means one-inch connections and smaller, probably includes some small businesses. The average increase for residential customers is not 11%, it's actually 15%. And I'm very confident of that number, 15%. Um, however, of course, it's not across the board. Uh, the winners are the ones for which the rate increase is less than 15%. So, that's lower on the graph. As you can see, those are the people who are using a lot of water, the big summer lawn waterers and anyone else who's using 100,000 gallons, two, three, four, 100,000 gallons of water. Fortunately, there aren't too many of those people. The losers are pretty much everyone else, um, the people who don't use very much water, which is almost everyone in the wintertime and many of us in the summertime as well, paying 15, 20% rate increase is typically, some as high as 30%. Now, on the commercial side, the average is only about 5%. Um, here's where I'd love to have more data to calculate that number more accurately. Maybe it's four and a half, maybe it's five and a half, but about 5% average commercial rate increase. By commercial, of course, I mean the larger connection sizes, one and a half inch and above. But again, it's not the same across the board. The winners are the smaller commercial connections, especially the one and a half and two-inch connections, who are actually getting a decrease of as much as 15% if they use enough water. That's because the highest rate is going way down for them. Uh, and the losers are generally the ones who are using less water and especially you see that three-inch connection size, it's anomalously high. I want to digress for a moment and talk about what happened with that three-inch connection size and more generally with the base rates for the commercial connection sizes. This is a plot using a smooth logarithmic scale on both axes to smooth out the data and spread it out and compress it so you can see everything of the old base rates, the current base rates, that is, with the connection size across the bottom and the number of dollars per month vertically. As you can see, it's a pretty straight line and a pretty smooth graph, which I think has a good rational basis. You know, bigger pipes have bigger capacity so you want to charge them for providing that capacity. If we were to raise everything uniformly across the board, it would shift the graph up by just a constant amount. So, the whole graph would just shift up uniformly. The actual proposal is much less uniform. It looks to me like there's noise in the data. The reason for that is because the method that's being used to calculate these base rates is based entirely on how much, on average, by connection size, each of these groups used during a particular month during a particular year. So, the idea is if the three-inch connection people used more money in that particular, used more water in that particular month, then we're going to charge all, on, on average, of course, and that could be just because there's a few real huge users, who knows. Um, that means that we're going to charge all three-inch connection people more from now on in perpetuity. And by the same token, the one and a half and two-inch connections, since they seem to use a little less in relation to their connection size, we're hardly going to raise their rates at all. And of course, this is frozen into the base rate from here on. Uh, getting back to the big picture, bottom line, let's divide it up between residential and commercial. Uh, and again, residential is the smaller connections, commercial is the larger ones. Each uses about half of the total water, about 2.1, 2, 2.1 or 2.2 billion gallons each. Uh, the answer to Councilwoman Van Hoosier's question, how does the breakdown of payments go under the current rates, it's 57.8% coming from the residential customers, the rest is from commercial. Under the new proposal, it would be 60.0% coming from the residential customers and 40%, of course, from the commercial customers. So, that's how it breaks down. I'm surprised that Mr. Dieter hasn't done this calculation. It's in his, the numbers are in his report. Uh, let's talk about sewer rates. Great news here. Sewer rates are actually going down overall, about minus 5%. Now, again, that's in comparison to the current rates that we're paying. That's not in comparison to the number that's in the fiscal 2012 budget. The number that's in the fiscal 2012 budget is about $1 million too low. As you'll see, it was for the fiscal 2011 budget. You'll see that the actual number came in about a million higher than budget. That's going to happen this year, too. Um, compared to the budgeted amount, it looks like an increase. Um, and despite the uncertainties, my best guess is that revenue will still be a little more than what's been projected in the consultant study. Again, there are winners and losers. Here's a graph with, with everyone on the same graph. Commercial is in the oranges and yellows and browns and, and the residential is blue. Um, again, big winners and some big losers, or relatively big losers. So, the big winners are the one and a half and two-inch connections, the four-inch connections and the six-inch connections, if they don't use too much water. This is again on the sewer rates. Um, the big losers are the residential users if they use too much water. But again, that's only, that's based on winter use only. So, it would only be if they use a huge amount of water in the winter that those skyrocketing blue lines would really hit them. Notice that the three-inch connections are not taking part in the 5% overall rate reduction. They're actually seeing a small increase. They, they don't participate in this winning proposition on sewer rates. Um, as far as the residential-commercial breakdown goes, again, the water use, if we just look at winter water use, which is what goes into the sewer system, or I should say indoor water use, would be a better word for that rather than winter, it's about 50/50 on the, who's using the water and who's putting the water into the sewer system. Currently, residential users are paying about 75% of the total sewer revenue that comes into the city. The commercial side is only paying about a quarter. And again, it would be nudged a little farther toward the residential side under the new proposal. The proposal would raise it to almost 77% from residential and a little under a quarter from the commercial users. So, in summary, water rates are going up 11% on average compared to what they are now. Sewer rates are going down about 5% on average compared to what they are now. The winners are the big water users, except if you're a big water, residential water user in the wintertime, in which case the sewer bill cancels out your gain on the water side. Most of the commercial users are big winners, but not all. Um, and it depends on your connection size. Uh, the losers are most residential users with the smaller connections, the ones who aren't using too much water, which is most of us most of the year. Um, and then commercial users with, who, who are unfortunate enough to have three-inch and to the lesser extent, eight-inch connections because of those irregularities in the calculation, the commercial base rates that I described. So, that's my best attempt at summarizing the rate structure before you. Of course, there have been a lot of other issues that have come up tonight, the long-range capital projects and, and a lot of other things, but I thought that was enough for my comments tonight. And thank you, thank you, thank you for all the time you've spent listening to me these last several weeks.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Warren Bowman. I live at 644 North Monroe Boulevard. Um, the only, I was looking at my water bills. I thought I was using far more than I was, but two years ago, I was using 10,000 gallons and last year it dropped 2,000, went to about 9,000. And I'm doing just what I have to, to keep my lawn green. I live, I know Councilman Hayer used to live next to me, so I'm not sure what the size of lot that I have. I don't know if it's an eighth of an acre, 16th of an acre.
About a quarter, I think.
Quarter. And, you know, I have removed grass. I've, I've tried to do zero landscaping. I've tried, but anytime you start doing those things, it's like, like Monday, I went to Valley Nursery. Five plants cost me 70 bucks just to try to, to conserve water. And I have gone as far as I can conceivably go. This year, um, my water, my water usage has already gone up 300 gallon. Um, and I really haven't done that much. And so, when we're looking at conservation, I'm all for it. Um, but 6,000 gallons in the summer, I can't water on 6,000, now closer to 10,000 maybe, to keep my lawn green. Um, my only complaint that I have is if you're a secondary user, um, you can conserve in different avenues, you know, whether it's replacing toilets or whatever. Um, whereas myself, every gallon of water that I use, I have to pay for. And so, realistically, I would, you know, on those tier levels, I would rather, you know, see from 6 to 10, 10,000 to 42,000, at least for three months out of the year. Um, I've done my best to try to conserve. Um, I'm continually looking at avenues to do that, but the city does require that we keep our lawns green. Uh, I mean, I can theoretically put in what they call tall fescue. Um, and it actually can go brown and still be alive, but that doesn't meet city requirements. And so, I don't know. I know that my neighborhood where I live in Ron Clare, many, many houses during the summer are brown. Um, and theoretically, the city could step in and do something about it. And so, I'm looking for fairness. I know that, um, if, if that 24, 20-inch line breaks, then, or anything else happens, then guaranteed that I would lose my lawn, I would lose trees, I would lose plants because there's no way to, to water if those lines. And so, like Minnie said, I wouldn't want to be in your shoes to try to figure out how you're going to do these things. Uh, but I'm just looking for fairness, trying to figure out how to, to water. Um, during most of the season, I'm able to keep it within check, but summertime, you know, I'm, I just don't know how else to, to water. Um, and so, you know, the nice thing about secondary is if you go out one month and you extra water, who cares? I can't do that. And so, anyway, thank you. Um, your job is hard. I think each of you care. I, there's no question in my mind. Um, but anyway, that's my thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. Further public comment?
Um, my name is Darren Boquag. I live on 662 Lockwood Drive, up a little north of Ron Clare. Um, and I get really frustrated because our neighborhood seems to have a lot of brown lawns. And, and I know it's because of the high water bills during the summer. Um, I know there's a lot of people that can't afford a $100 water bill. I know it's hard for me to accomplish that every summer, especially for three to four months. And raising the water bill is just going to make it worse. Um, those same people, the, the process of going through and ticketing people with brown lawns isn't helping. It's only, you know, stinging, just like a sting off of a bee, you know? You just temporarily, and then it happens next year. Oh, well, we'll water our lawn for three weeks or so. Um, and it frustrates me that way, where we're not being able to water our lawns. For me, I have to constantly figure out what I'm going to use. So, um, where every, I use the culinary water. I don't know if I explained that or not, but the culinary, it's just as frustrating because every, when you raise the rates, you know, what am I going to do? Am I choosing to have a brown lawn or choose to have a green lawn? Um, and those are my, my questions for you. So, thanks.
Thank you.
You would need to close the public hearing before you begin your discussion.
Okay.
Chair, we've closed the public hearings for the Culinary Water Master Plan, Stormwater Master Plan, the Capital Improvement Plan for fiscal year 2013 and 2017.
Sorry, we can't hear you in the, the mic, please.
Utility Rate Proposal. Want me to repeat it?
Please.
I propose that we close the public hearings for the Culinary Water Master Plan, the Stormwater Master Plan, Capital Improvement Plan for fiscal years 2013 to 2017, and the Utility Rate Proposal.
I'll second it.
We have a motion from Councilmember Hayer and a second from Councilmember Wicks to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Could we maybe get some answers to some of the concerns brought up by citizens? I wrote them down. Um, the first one would be to address the issue of extending secondary water to residents without. And I don't know who would be the best.
I think our city engineer, Justin, would be who I'd turn to first. He's got a sweater vest on, looks sharp.
Thank you, CAO Johnson, Chair Garner and other members of the council. Um, in considering secondary water expansion, there are many things to consider. First of all is water rights. Ogden City has set up a system for culinary water, but has not set up a system for secondary. There has been other agencies, namely, you've heard Pine View or Weber Basin, that has used their water rights to serve citizens in all areas, not just Ogden City, but other surrounding communities with their water rights. Now, depending on what year the citizens signed up for, to, with Pine View or Weber Basin, it affects the, the amount of leftover water to, to share other places. So, essentially, I, I know there was a, let me go through some of the comments here.
Yeah, there was concern about somewhere on 12th Street and there was also.
Yeah, 12th Street and on 29th Street.
Connection at the top of 29th Street.
The condos at Skyline. Now, if, when they built those condos, I cannot answer for why they, they built those and the developer didn't sign up for secondary water. Now, when you sign up for secondary water, there is a cost. Maybe they felt at that time that wasn't a cost they wanted to bear and now they are seeing the effects of not signing up at that time. Um, as far as expanding the system, again, we need water rights and to be able to, um, serve, provide that water to those residents. However, as, as what was pointed out in the Culinary Water Master Plan, you, to set up a, a system to serve people is not cheap. The water system right now is about half a billion dollars is where it sits. If we were to go and replace everything, to install a secondary system, we're going to be cutting up into roads. There's going to be additional costs that way. And for residents to actually sign on, I'm assuming they're going to have to pay, you know, quite a hefty hookup fee. And to do it, you're going to have to force everybody in a certain area to do it.
And that would be only if the utility that provides secondary water was willing, enabled to provide that.
Correct. Either Ogden City has to go and find the, the additional water rights, which, living where we do, isn't the, you know, there's not a lot of extra water rights floating around. Um, yes. And we would have to go to a different agency and work with them and, and actually look to either help them find additional water rights or essentially give them some of ours for, you know, that we use for culinary water.
The age of the city does not play in our favor either because we're mostly build out, but.
Yes.
I understand we've, we've actually added some secondary water on the north end. Haven't we done that?
Yes. Typically, in, when developments occur, it, it is much cheaper at that time to put in secondary water as, you know, not digging up and having to replace roadways. Um, so you can go in and if, if the water rights are available and they come at a cost and the developer so chooses. a cost and the developer so chooses, they, they can get put in relatively at a cheaper cost. However, the homeowner at that time will absorb those costs when he buys those lots. And so coming back after the fact, I mean, I, I don't know exactly why all the development took place the way it did. However, they chose at that time whether or not they wanted secondary water. And, and maybe some areas may not have had access to that. I can't speak for the other, for Weber Basin or Pineview, um, for how their systems are set up.
So I can understand a neighborhood's very complicated, but the condominiums at 29th Street, is there a process they can at least try and go through to, I mean, do they go to the city? Do they go to Weber Basin? Do they go to Pineview?
Yeah, that's not, yeah. They would have to go to probably, I believe at that location, it would be Pineview Water. So they would go and solicit Pineview Water. Now, depending on available water rights in that area, if they have any, you know, then they could purchase those.
So.
And they would also have to set up a system to convey it to them.
So the direction then would be they need to work with Pineview on that?
Correct. That would be Terrell Grimley with Pineview Water.
And I, I know Jay Lauder's standing up back there, but I think I understand that Mount Ogden.
He's sitting down.
Actually, oh, is he, oh, he's right there. You were standing up a second ago, and maybe you were going to answer this, but doesn't Mount Ogden use culinary water right now? The, the golf course park area?
Mount Ogden uses both.
They use both?
Uh, they have the capacity, they have a reservoir that they can hold so many foot feet of water from Pineview during the fall seasons, but they use mainly culinary water, yes. And I'd like to address, Councilwoman Wicks, your question. The gentleman that addressed you is in an area that we, uh, at the time, may or god forbid, to do, try to get all the citizens we can into secondary water wherever we can. And it's a big, it's like Justin was just telling you, it's a big task to come into established neighborhoods and, and put the infrastructure in place to supply it. For one thing, you either have to tear up backyards and landscape, or you have to tear up the roads, which are very expensive. But I asked Terrell Grimley with Pineview if there was some low hanging fruit that we could help any of our residents with. And we targeted the area that's north of 12th Street. I can't remember the, it's a jaggy line across the north end, but it goes to Harrison to the, to the foothills. There's that whole section that doesn't have secondary water, but the surrounding neighborhoods all the way around it do. And so they're, they're still controlled in there with irrigation canals. The Lynn Canal is just one, uh, one of them that's, that's in there. And so, uh, it was just, it was decided by Pineview as they looked at it, that they could actually use irrigation canals as a place to lay their lines. And, um, if the ditch companies were willing to give them their water rights to supply the same people with water, and it was, it was a doable thing. The only thing that was a holdup with that whole area, which is the one I believe you've heard about, was that they didn't have quite enough water rights to make it work. And so we were willing to take some, take some of our water rights and let them use the water, not give them our water rights, but let them use the water we weren't using in order to make that happen. We held a town meeting. We had about 60, 65 residents that did hear that it was coming. The date that I was given, and so was the citizens at that time, was 2013. Now, that, that timeframe is totally in Pineview's hands. We have, we can't force them, we can't do anything other than pressure them for our citizens to try to help get some more, um, secondary water there for them, so.
So would we then create some sort of special improvement district in that area to provide those citizens so they?
Well, there, there's options.
By the infrastructure?
Usually what happens on, on secondary water usually is they have their kind of own, their own special assessment that it's going to take X amount of feet of line to get to your house, you have to pay for that, and then the next guy has to pay for X amount of feet, and then the lady beyond that has to pay. And so it's kind of like a butter's alley. Each one has a combined responsibility to get the line in there. And so, yeah, there'd be shared costs because you have distribution lines and you have your, your transmission lines. And so whatever that cost is, it would be divided up among the residents. And last I heard, Pineview was, their engineers were all working on that and what that cost would be.
So, Mr. Lauder, this particular 29th Street, this is the second citizen who's come to us. Now, we've got one, you know, a whole high rise or a tower and a citizen on the other side of 29th. Can we just give them the information for Pineview and let them get ahold of it? And can, I mean, I consider that maybe some of that low hanging fruit.
I can look it up in the phone book and we can give it to them. I mean, it's available to anyone. It's, it's just their general office on Second Street, but we can give them the information and, and they can contact the, um, the office.
So the, the short answer to that is it's not as easy as just.
Disconnecting one.
Disconnecting one and hooking up another, or putting in the, the line.
No, it's just.
Water rights, there's, you know, availability of capacity within the existing secondary system and all of those to get it done. And there are maybe a few instances where we can maybe help facilitate that, but for a majority of citizens, it's just really not feasible to put in secondary, a secondary water connection.
And large, large portion of it, it is extremely expensive. So, yes, you're correct.
The con, the location of Pineview Water is 471 West Second Street. It's in between Wall Avenue and BDO.
Justin, while you're there, can you just give a brief report on that canyon line coming down Ogden Canyon and also the condition of our filter plant up the canyon?
Yes, um, there's actually two water lines that come down Ogden Canyon. One is a 24 inch steel line that was installed in 1914. The other is a 36 inch line that was installed in 1936. And it is, uh, what's called a shock coat steel line, which is a combination of a cementous material and a steel pipe. The line in question is the line, the 24 inch that was installed in 1914. The, we are currently working with Horox engineers on finalizing a design for replacement. The pipe itself runs mainly in the roadway, um, all the way from the filter plant, all the way down to the mouth of the canyon. And so we're trying to use trenchless technologies to replace the pipe as much as possible while, while still keeping the 24 inch diameter. That line, um, is in poor condition. Um, the assessments that I've seen is there's quite a few leaks, and of course, we had the rupture in the winter of 2008 that put the north part of the city out of water. The filter plant, there's actually two parts to the filter plant. There's a tree, pre-treatment building that was installed in the year 1995. And that was an upgrade to the other building, which is, just uses filter bed technology. The pre-treatment building, um, has worked and is structurally sound, and that is not the building that is in question. The building that needs to be replaced is the building that does the filter beds, the, the sand filter beds. Now, there is, um, technology that is newer than the technology that was used back in 1955. Now, that technology still works and it can still treat water. However, there's newer technologies, there's a membrane filter plant. The costs are slightly higher, um, and they can treat water in a more efficient manner than the, the sand filter beds, meaning they don't need as much operation and maintenance to, to go along with, with dealing with all the issues they have to.
The quality of the water is better too with that system.
Yeah, yes, the quality of the water is top of the line.
But the, where the water goes in, I don't know what they call them, is those ponds there that, I guess they filter out, uh, the gunk that's in the water. Those are deteriorating on the inside there, aren't they?
Yes, um, essentially, there's, there's layers, um, of those sand beds. And if, if you can imagine a cross section, on, there's, there's a bottom layer, then they got some sand filters and, and they go on up. And they also have kind of little troughs or channels that also, um, used to, for the treatment. And, and on top, you can actually see in those troughs and channels deterioration and, and those coming apart. But what you can't see is underneath is the deterioration of the beds on bottom. And that's actually what the main concern is, is those beds on bottom. And also, there's some structural problems with the building. Um, it's been pointed out over the last few months that the, the building, again, was built in 1950s. Um, it's, it's got some cracks in the concrete. Now, just because concrete has a crack doesn't mean that that's something to fear about. However, when you see cracks with large gaps, that is something to, to be concerned with. And they have done a pretty good job of trying to, to patch and cover those, but those, those gaps keep getting wider and, you know, more difficult to, to deal with and cover up.
Oh, you're here. One other question for you. Can you address just Mr. Blanchard's concerns for 21st and Fowler?
Yes, um, now that is, I know, we, we've recently received their, their photos and complaints, and I believe, um, there's been a few people out there to be dispatched, um, to, to go over the concerns. Um, you know, they, they brought up multiple concerns. They brought up concerns about the water pipes, they brought up concerns about the sewer pipes, they brought up the concerns about the roadway, and they also brought up concerns about the sidewalk. And so it looks, the way it sounds to me, and, and I haven't personally been up there to, to see that yet, but we have had personnel go up there, is they look like they need, um, a rehab of the, of the street. The, you know, going all the way and, and probably replacing some of the water lines. They've probably experienced breaks all along there. When a water line breaks, it becomes very difficult to patch it back and have a smooth ride. Um, you know, I can't explain necessarily all the breaks that have occurred, but it looks like there's probably been quite a few. The, now, the, they did bring up some points about being concerned about the, the water and, and the sewer being relatively close together. Um, I cannot verify it at this moment, but typically they, the state standard is to have 10 feet of separation. And, you know, the, the sewer is, um, not pressurized, the water is pressurized. And so that makes a, a bit of a difference in the fact that the, the sewer system is, is not having pressure pushed out on the pipe. Um, in fact, water usually tends to try to seep into the sewer. But, but there is always concerns and, and we diligently work on making sure that, in testing our water, that it's clean, that it's drinkable, and that there's no problems. Now, some of that may be groundwater in the area, I don't know, but we will need to assess
Any other questions for Justin?
Oh, not for him, but, um, I just wondered who wanted to maybe talk about the Weber Basin tax. That was one of the questions.
Yeah, we actually have addressed this Weber Basin tax a little bit in, in the resolution and in the ordinance both, and I apologize for not covering that. I didn't realize that, that that was, um, something that was still out there as far as wondering how that works. So just a, a brief explanation for Ms. Watson and anybody else who sees, uh, Weber Basin charge on their tax bill. Um, there, there may be a portion of Weber tax, or Weber Basin taxes associated with secondary water, but usually what people are seeing is tax not for city infrastructure. And I think that that was Ms. Watson's concern, was that, that she felt like that they were paying some money in their taxes for Weber Basin water, and, and how come the city is now saying we need infrastructure money when they're already paying for that? What that line item on somebody's taxes goes for is the actual culinary water, not secondary water, it's actual culinary water that the city uses in the culinary water system. And, uh, at the time that we acquired the, the water from Weber Basin, um, 40 years ago, or whenever it was that we started using it, the, the city essentially elected at that time, rather than, than paying that bill to Weber Basin, uh, through operating expenses that instead it would be collected for ease of, I guess, uh, collection through, uh, property tax system. And, and so people aren't double paying for water because that's money that we don't have to collect in the rates that otherwise would be collected. So if, if we, and, and there's always that discussion open, and the council certainly is, is in a position to have that discussion, but, but if, if that's taken off your tax bill, it doesn't mean your water rate's not going to stay the same. Your water rate's going to have to go up to provide the additional funds to pay, uh, Weber Basin for the culinary water we receive from them. And so it, it pays for, for the Weber Basin facilities that treat that water and that deliver that water. Because, for example, most of the, well, all of the culinary water that's treated that we get from Weber Basin comes from their South Weaverch Plant. They have to maintain a pipeline that goes all the way to the Weber River and the Weber Canyon and have to operate, uh, a facility there, which actually was originally the same kind of building that we have in our, in our canyon, but they've gone in and rehabbed it. And so they have costs associated with that, and, and that's what the, the line item on, on the taxes, uh, covers. I don't know if that answers that adequately or not. Thank you.
Then there was just one more issue. I don't know who would want to maybe address it, but there was concern about subsidizing the East Bench users. Anybody want to take a stab at that one?
And I think that part of it maybe was the Weber Basin water chart.
Actually, it was a different customer, or, I mean, a different citizen.
And, yeah, so.
Concern the, uh, the different water rates for secondary versus the non-secondary. And you just, Mr. Stratford did address that. I don't know if you specifically.
Um, I, I don't know that it's fair to say that any one user in the city subsidizes any other user in the city. I mean, we have a system that has tiers based on water usage and, and I guess one thing I do want to emphasize is there are a lot of cities that don't give any kind of a break to people who use culinary water for irrigation purposes or for outside watering purposes. Um, the fact that Ogden City has chosen to do that, one could argue then becomes a subsidy of some kind because those people, and I tried to address this in, in my original comments, that if you, if you don't have outside watering, uh, available to you, you don't get to the highest tier as fast as somebody else. I, I personally don't see that as a subsidy one way or another. I, I see it as, as a, as a method of collecting costs, that we try to, to, to put people in a category that makes sense for them and charge them what, what seems to be a, a fair rate to try and, and collect money to pay for our system. I, I think, uh, but, but you could argue that, that any kind of distinction, somebody's subsidizing somebody else. And so if you wanted to get rid of that entirely, you would just say, okay, we're not charging any base rate, we're going to just charge per thousand gallons for everybody in the city. And Cody would tell you that that would be extremely dangerous because you wouldn't be able to guarantee that you have any money to pay your expenses. Uh, and, and so I think it's just, um, a function of certain classes of people do pay different water rates, but it's not to subsidize somebody else and make their rate lower. It's just to try and recognize that different people find themselves in different situations. Um, I, I, one other item that, that I guess as long as I'm here and I'll go ahead and address, Mr. Thompson, um, in the letter that was, that was read from Mr. Stein about the concept of, we need to cut a bunch of city costs, uh, and, and transfer that money into the water department. Essentially, that's what it sounded like to me was, was the proposal. And, and just so that all the citizens understand, um, the water and all of the utilities operate as enterprise funds. Uh, and the council's well aware of this, but an enterprise fund is designed to be self-sustaining. And so it would be inconsistent with that principle to use savings from other city departments to fund water infrastructure because it's supposed to stand on its own. Um, whether or not there are ways within the water department to save money, I, I think is, is fair game, but, but to suggest that, that there should be money from other city, um, organizations that go then to the water department would not be consistent with good financial practices for the water department, um, or really for any of the other, uh, systems in the city.
Well, and maybe another way to look at it would be the franchise tax and other fees that are about 17% that is subsidizing the city's general fund that we need to look at as a policy decision. You know, is that right that our water utility, which we own and operate, is subsidizing the general fund to that extent?
Sure, that's fair. Right, that's absolutely.
So that could be the concern too. I don't know. I wasn't really clear, but that's another way to look at it.
And Mr. Nielsen, I think, left. But I did want to clarify, he was, it sounded like he was concerned that we were previously charging people without secondary water a dollar fifty per thousand gallons, and now we're going to charge them three dollars per thousand gallons. I, I, if that came out that way, that was, uh, incorrect. I was trying to explain that we currently have a tiered structure between about a dollar fifty and about three dollars and 20 cents. We're keeping that tiered structure. It's not that we're jumping those rates up from a dollar fifty to three dollars. We're still keeping a tiered structure. Uh, there are just different breakpoints in there, and, and so it's not as severe as that may have sounded.
Could we have?
One thing that I've heard over and over again is that during the summer, we use greater amount of water, and that was a concern that they had, whether we need to look at the summer rates versus the winter rate, uh, process, but, uh, that's, uh, but that's what I heard on a continual basis.
Could we maybe have somebody address to the, someone had brought up the possibility of using water from sump pumps? of using water from sump pumps, that their groundwater that they're dealing with in their home for watering?
The city.
Yeah.
Well, that was Mona Lisa.
Yes, they did bring up, why can't we use that water? There seems to be an abundant supply. In fact, there is, there is an abundant supply of water in Ogden. You can go right down in this city block and go down in the ground and find a lot of water. The problem with that water is it's poor quality. So, to take that water, pump it up, and then treat it.
I don't think the concern was treating it. I think it was.
And be used as secondary.
Secondary to water people's lawns.
And probably Attorney Stratford could answer this better.
Yeah, that's why I'm thinking it's maybe a water right issue.
Stay here, if that's okay. I know I'm supposed to probably be down there. Yeah, Utah is, as a western state doctrine of what's called prior appropriation, which means the first person to use water is entitled to receive that water. The fact that there's a lot of water underground doesn't mean that it hasn't already been spoken for. It just means it's on its way to wherever it's supposed to go. And if somebody takes that water themselves and starts using it, then they deplete the supply of water that's available for the farmer or whoever else out there is relying on that recharge to take place. And so, it's not legally possible under state law to just start taking that water. Now, if you had financially the ability to install some kind of a system to take that water, and you had another water right somewhere else that you were trading to use that, you might be able to do that, but you'd face all the same problems that have been discussed about the cost of implementing a distribution system. But it's not as simple as saying, well, there's a lot of water underground, therefore, we can use it somewhere else.
You're pumping it out of your basement, you couldn't store it on your property and somehow charge it into a watering system. What about gray water?
The legislature has, in the last couple of years, had a few bills about rainwater, and there's only so much rainwater you can contain, you can capture, contain, and use on your own property.
So.
So, they even regulate that at the state level of how much you can do.
Right, that's 25.
Sump pump.
That's 2,500 gallons is the maximum amount you're allowed to retain from storm water, zero from groundwater.
So, 2,500 gallons per year?
You're allowed to have a tank that can hold 2,500 gallons.
Okay.
Once it's full, you can't get anymore. If you use it and it rains again, you can fill it back up.
Okay, so, the most you can have collected is.
Storm water.
And as far as gray water, sure, there's the possibility that if somebody were to collect their gray water, they have to go through a process to have an approval from the County Health Department. They've done it correctly, but there is a process to reuse gray water on your own property.
And there are some people, I think, who do that, do that here in Ogden.
Okay, we've addressed most of the public comments. Is there anybody who wants to address Mr. Schroeder's slide presentation?
Anything in particular that you would like me to start with?
Cody, I'll just jump to his summary. He says, you know, water rates are going up 11 percent on average, sewer rates are going down 5 percent, and the big winners are big water users and most commercial users. Why don't we just start with just maybe his summary?
All right. Our analysis is, was intended to first look at revenue sufficiency, make sure you have enough revenue to cover your costs, and then to, as equitably as possible, distribute the collection of revenue based on the benefit that individuals receive from using water. So, that was the premise of the analysis that we provided, and I think some of the perceived discrepancies that Mr. Schroeder brought forward relate to the fact that data is never perfect, and that there's always going to be a margin of error when you're projecting forward, looking at usage, revenue generation. The math that was performed, I'm guessing, is accurate from Mr. Schroeder. I have no reason to think that it isn't, but it's a matter of which numbers that you use. And we've tried to be conservative and make sure that the city isn't in a position going forward where you receive less revenue than what we have projected or what we are showing. And we think that our analysis is accurate and will provide the city with a fiscally healthy utility system for the three utilities we've studied into the future, and, you know, we'll certainly hedge that there's a 5 percent discrepancy in all that we do, because we don't think that you can project it at 100 percent. And so, you know, you could, if you look at dividing things on the edges of both of those 5 percent, you can come up with a lot of different numbers. But our desire is to make sure you have a healthy fund balance, healthy fiscal, you know, healthy fiscal, fiscally healthy utility, and that's what we've tried to do. In terms of winners and losers, we've tried to make, winners and losers, I think the premise behind that is, what was done before was equitable and fair, and then when we're changing it, that's the baseline, is what was done before. Well, there may be people who are winners and losers when you look at it that way, and the analysis that was performed and reviewed with the committee that we worked with, it's bringing it in line with actual usage data, so that it is more fair and equitable.
Could you address the issue with the calculations where 60 percent of the revenue is from residential customers, when only 50 percent of the usage is from residential customers? And that's with the water. With the sewer, if 76.8 percent of the revenue is coming from residential users, yet less than 50 percent of the winter water use is residential, that doesn't seem quite fair.
That's in the sewer revenue?
Yeah, that's in the sewer. Where we're getting 76.8 percent of the revenue from the residential users, when they use less than 50 percent of the water in winter.
Get through, I hate. So, to summarize, make sure I understand the question, it's that there's a difference between water and sewer in the amount that revenue that's generated.
Yeah, well, and the same with the water. Somehow, the calculations maybe aren't correct. I'm not sure, you know, where the discrepancy is, but if 60 percent of the revenue is from residential, yet only 50 percent of the usage is from residential, then we're charging residential users too much for the service, I think. And the same with the sewer fund. If 76.8 percent of the revenue is coming from the residential users, when the winter water usage is less than 50 percent, that just doesn't seem fair.
And from what I looked at it, I believe the frame of reference, and I'm not sure, I'd need to look at it again, was out of a pure volume standpoint. In servicing everybody in the city, there is a cost with storage, fire flow, and equalization, and also distribution of that to each individual residence. So, when, if you're looking at it pure storage, that probably is a correct analysis. However, we are committed to providing water to each residence, and the volume of water is not necessarily known at each residence. So, we have to meet the peak day demand, and so, that's what we build our system to. So, you know, whether somebody's using a small amount of water or a large amount of water, there is some costs associated with storage and fire flow. Now, it may vary depending on the usage, and so, that's where the variable comes into play.
Well, I realize that, but it's just, it seems fair that if, you know, 50 percent of the use is residential, then 50 percent of the revenue should be from those residential users, not 60 percent. And with the sewer, if, you know, 50 percent of the winter water usage, which you could assume maybe is going into the sewer, at least some of it is, yet you're charging, yeah, 70 percent, 76.8 percent of the revenue in that fund with the proposed rate structure is coming from those residential users, I think we're charging our residential users too much and not charging our commercial users enough.
I think that's purely a policy decision. I think what Justin resonates certainly with me, the idea of there's a certain amount of cost that has to be borne regardless of whether or not you use any water.
Yeah, there is, but there's also, I mean, it just seems fair that you would split that between the two different user classes and go from there.
Further questions?
I don't know that we ever intended to shoulder our residential users with that much of a burden.
Certainly is probably less than we have.
And what are we talking, money-wise? Can you, can we have any idea of what that would be?
Money-wise in regard to?
Money, in regard to the splitting of the costs? The cost for sewer, isn't that what you're discussing?
Yeah, well, and there's some other discrepancies, too.
$6 and, I mean, I don't have it up here, but what is it? I mean, I didn't.
For sanitary sewer?
Dollars and six.
I think that's for, that's for storm drain.
For what?
Sounds like you may be speaking to storm drain, where there's $6.91 for.
You pay more, most people pay more for sewage than they pay for their water.
Okay.
And I also recall in a meeting, we directed that we kind of landed on 37.5 percent of the revenue come from the base rate, and it looks like about 50 percent of that revenue is, for the residential customers, is coming from the base rate, instead of.
In culinary?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, the amount, when we discussed that in the meeting, we were looking at the per ERC. If you need $46 per ERC, how much of that should come from the base and how much in the tiers? And 37.5 was the direction we received from the council, and that's where the $17.50 came from. And you multiply that by the amount of ERCs and connect, excuse me, connections that we project, and that gives you the total amount of base revenue.
But if we overestimate the number of ERCs, wouldn't that calculation be wrong? I mean, if we're counting, if the one-inch users are being counted for 1.66.
Yeah, it would be a very, yeah, very slight overestimation. You'd have a little bit more revenue than you currently anticipated, but it'd be nominable, certainly within the 5 percent tolerance.
5 percent sat up.
I guess I'd like to make a suggestion. In light of the volume of the information and the time of night it is, I would like to make a motion to continue further consideration of Resolution 2012-10 to May 22, 2012, to allow for council deliberations. I'll second that.
We have a motion from Councilmember Gockner and a second from Councilmember Wicks to move further discussion to May 22. For each of these, correct?
Actually, this is the first resolution.
Oh, for the first resolution, for the, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And continuing in that theme, I would also make a motion to continue further consideration of Resolution 2012-11 to May 22, 2012, to allow for council deliberations.
I'll second it.
We have a motion from Councilmember Van, or Gockner, and a second from Councilmember Van Huser to move further discussion for proposed Resolution 2012-11 to May 22. All in favor? Or this is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And continuing on, I would make the same motion for Ordinance 2012-22.
I'll second it.
We have a motion from Councilmember Gockner and a second from Councilmember Wicks for to move proposed Ordinance 2012-22 for further discussion to May 22. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
In that same theme, I would make the same motion for Ordinance 2012-23.
We have a motion from Councilmember Gockner and a second from Vice Chair Blair to move the proposed Ordinance 2012-23 for further discussion to May 22. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
And finally.
Any opposed? Thank you.
I would make the same proposal for proposed joint resolution 2012-3.
I'll second that.
From Councilmember Gockner and a second from Councilmember Wicks to move proposed joint, discussion on proposed joint resolution 2012-3 to May 22. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We'll have a lot of further discussion and move this to May 22. We'll now take a short break and then come back for new business. We want to welcome everybody back from the break, and next on the agenda is new business, and we have the Mount Ogden Park Pickle Bowl Court expansion with presentations and Janine Eller-Smith.
Whoops. It didn't come to me.
Oh, didn't it?
It didn't show up.
Well, first, we're going to talk about donation policy. This concept of controlling donations to the city came up the last time Pickle Bowl Courts came up, and so, we thought it might be good to address them at the same time. So, first, we'll just talk about the amendments to the capital improvement ordinance, and it's to include a donation policy amendment. And I know that's a lot of words on there, but I promised Bill it's 24-type. So. This is on page 680 of your packet, in case you want to know. But the, so, we're amending the capital improvement budget, project, or ordinance to include some language that addresses donations, and there's some other parts in the ordinance where it just adds private donors language in here, but I thought this was clear, because it sets forth the policy. It's the intent of the city council that projects will not be funded by the Capital Improvement Fund or carried out through expenditures of private donors, other than projects for general maintenance, unless such projects have been approved by the city council as part of an adopted plan. So, this gets to the fact that any project, whether it's completed through expenditure of city funds, or it's completed through expenditure of private donors, or funds that are donated to the city, if it meets the, all the other criteria for capital improvement project, it will fall under this project, or capital improvement project plan, and will need to be an amendment to the plan. So, we added this disclosure, so this is all new language, and it's just sort of to kind of, to get to the issue of making it public and transparent to the citizens when these kinds of things come up. So, anytime a private donor makes a donation valued at $30,000, they will need to file a paper, this disclosure paper that identifies the CIP project and describing the purposes, the value of the donation, the dates and goods or services that are delivered to the city, and certifying that it's voluntary. Council members were concerned that maybe there could been some duress or some, you know, collusion or some sort of pressure, one way or the other, either to a city employee or from a city employee, to get these donations, and so, we just wanted to make sure that it was voluntary and that it was without condition, and that if it was conditioned, the donation was conditioned, that somehow that was outlined in this disclosure, so that it was clear, you know, what the expectations of the donor was in making the donation. And then, this information will be placed with a city recorder, so that it's available to the public if there's any issues. So, that deals with the donation disclosure. We had another issue that came up recently, which also, we thought, made sense to amend the capital improvement ordinance relating to emergency expenditures, and that's just mainly to mean that anything, any expenditure out of the emergency expenditure fund in the capital, or account in the capital improvement fund needed to be reported to the council. There was some question about whether it needed to meet that $30,000 threshold before the reporting requirements that are in another section kicked in, and this just clarifies that any amount would need to be reported under those, under that. And this just clarifies that any amount would need to be reported under those, under that part of the ordinance. So that's the donation policy, amendment to the capital improvement ordinance. So I don't know if you have any questions about that.
I think you've addressed what our concerns were, so thank you.
So then, last, when we had the work session on the pickleball courts, and we had Mr. Huffaker here and Jay Lauder talking about the expansion of the pickleball courts at the Mount Ogden Park, they mentioned that there was this plan that they drafted and made available to the pickleball people and the tennis people to show that, in fact, they had a plan in place and there wasn't going to be just sort of unlimited expansion up there, and that they were trying to make it fair to both of the communities. So this is the plan that they've drawn up. These are the existing tennis courts here. These are the existing pickleball courts. These are the new courts that are proposed, which the city received ramp funds for. And these are future tennis courts that are also in the plan. In addition, they've provided for additional parking, which I believe there's about 28 parking spaces. And so after we had the discussion about this plan, councilmembers thought it might be good to kind of give some comfort to the pickleball people and the tennis people that this was an adopted development plan in that area, and, you know, there wasn't just going to be unlimited pickleball courts going in there. So you have a resolution in your packet, let's see what page, that basically adopts this plan, recognizing that the, there's future development when funds become available for the tennis courts and the increase in the parking. Any questions about that?
My understanding is that these would probably be the last tennis courts and pickleball courts built in that area.
They'll be the last pickleball courts. And right now, there's no funding for the tennis courts, my understanding. When that funding becomes available and those get built, those will be the last ones there. And I don't know if Mr. Huffaker wants to address that, but I know in the work session, they just expressed that there are other parks that are sort of underutilized that might be other places where tennis or could be expanded or pickleball if that was a desire of the city to go that way.
Right. And these tennis courts might be a future ramp request?
That ends my presentation. So also before you will be the funding for the pickleball courts. As we mentioned, we did get a ramp grant, but because of the timing and the need to get these built, we're going to hand, I'm going to have Mr. Arrington describe to you how we're going to fund the projects, project now, with the understanding that we'll recognize the ramp funds and the private donor funds in a couple of weeks. So I'll turn the time over to Mr. Arrington.
Chair Garner, members of the councils, pleasure to be with you tonight. As Ms. Eller-Smith explained, we are going to accomplish two things with this budget opening. First of all, to comply with the fact that projects need to be in the CIP plan, this ordinance places the pickleball court project, which is in your packets, has the project brief explaining it with the dollar amount of $80,000. Just to note, this has been through the planning commission and is intended initially to be in the fiscal year 2013 CIP plan. So it's gone through all the process to put it in the plan. It's just that we're moving it up a year to accommodate the construction needs. So this budget opening and CIP plan adjustment, first of all, adds this project to the CIP plan for the current year. Then, again, to accommodate the desired construction time, you'll recall that we've been using some funds which the city put aside for 31st Street Entryway for several projects because that one seems to be delayed beyond when we can see that's going to be done. There is sufficient funding left in that project to fund this pickleball court construction at the present time, which is $80,000. And the budget opening proposes transferring $80,000 from 31st Street Entryway to the pickleball court account for that construction. As mentioned earlier, this is just an initial construction-type funding. The pickleball courts are actually funded with a ramp grant and a donation, which follows the guidelines which we've discussed tonight. So before the end of the year, given the time that it takes, the appropriation of new funds, this money will be replaced in the 31st Street Entryway account to be appropriated in future things as it's normal, or has been intended to do. So tonight, we're amending the CIP plan and funding the pickleball courts from the 31st Street Entryway. So are there any questions about that?
Maybe just one. In our proposal, or in the proposed ordinance for just the funding, do we need to say anything in there that we will be taking or refunding that back with the ramp? Or is that...
It's not necessary. I just gave you that as information so you know that it will be forthcoming. This ordinance just stands on its own as transferring that funding.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I think the intention is to process that in the normal fashion, which will require a public hearing process. And actually, I think we've already received some of the documents to help with that forward.
Okay, thank you. Okay, further questions? We can receive public input on this. Is there anybody who'd like to come up from the public? Seems there's no public input. Do we have a motion?
I have unofficial public input. One citizen that apologized for not being able to be here tonight, Melissa Harrison, she just wanted to make the point that everybody realizes there's a huge need for a covered racket facility in Ogden and to take that into consideration as we have lots of money left over. And then I did get feedback from one citizen that lives right across the street from the pickleball courts. And he's wondering if there could be some kind of signage at those courts because apparently they're quite boisterous very early in the morning. So just passing that on.
Maybe make it so they can't start until 8:00.
But the best time in the summer to play is 6:00.
I realize that, but it is so loud. And it's not just the pickleball noise, it's the people playing, which is great. They're having fun, but you can, you can hear it. I'm not directly on that street. I'm behind the person who's on that street, and I can hear it with my windows closed.
So their point wasn't, they aren't bothered by the sound of the game. It's more that there's all this yelling that they're just wondering about signage.
So you would propose a quiet hour kind of a thing up until 8:00?
Oh, but, I mean, the best time to play in the summer is at 6:00.
No, I mean, just where they keep the voices down.
Whisper voice, your quiet voice, yeah.
Thank you for that public input. Any further discussion?
If there's no further discussion, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we adopt proposed Ordinance 2012-26.
I'll second it.
We have a motion from Councilmember Gockner and a second from Councilmember Van Hoosier to adopt proposed Ordinance 2012-26. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Gockner?
Aye.
Councilmember Hyer?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember Van Hoosier?
Aye.
Councilmember Wicks?
Aye.
Vice Chair Blair?
Aye.
Chair Garner?
Aye. Thank you. Then, next?
I'll go ahead and make a proposal that we adopt Resolution 2012-14.
I'll second that.
We have a motion from Councilmember Gockner and a second from Councilmember Van Hoosier to adopt the proposed Resolution 2012-14. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Hyer?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember Van Hoosier?
Aye.
Councilmember Wicks?
Aye.
Councilmember Gockner?
Aye.
Vice Chair Blair?
Aye.
Chair Garner?
Aye. This passes. And last?
I'd move that we adopt proposed Ordinance 2012-27, modifying the fiscal year 2012/2016 capital improvement plan.
I second it.
We have a motion from Councilmember Van Hoosier and a second from Councilmember Stevens to adopt proposed Ordinance 2012-27. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember Van Hoosier?
Aye.
Councilmember Wicks?
Aye.
Councilmember Gockner?
Aye.
Councilmember Hyer?
Aye.
Vice Chair Blair?
Aye.
Chair Garner?
Aye. This passes. Thank you. Next on the agenda is public comments. This is an opportunity to address the council concerning your, or regarding your concerns or ideas. Please limit your comments to three minutes in this form of government. All city personnel are the responsibility of administration, not of the council. Please discuss any concerns you may have regarding staff with the mayor, chief administrative officer, or department directors. No public comments? Comments from administration?
Yes, I have two that the mayor asked me to pass on. Number one, he wanted to thank the employees and staff for their hard work and commitment to such a complicated and difficult issue as the water and sewer have been. And secondly, he wanted me to invite everyone to the marathon on Friday and Saturday, and thank you for your continued support of the marathon. We're expecting around 20,000 people to be down here on Saturday. We hope they spend a lot of money.
Thank you, council staff.
And just also to thank everyone for accommodating the schedule that we've been trying to keep. It's really been, I think, difficult for a lot of people and appreciate it. And we're still in the middle of the budget, so continued thanks.
Thank you. And council members?
I just had one thing. I know it's late, but the star attractions are all here. We had our fourth annual Make a Difference Day last year, last week, and Jay Lauder and his amazing crew pulled off amazing things all over town. We had over 60 projects, so thank you. It was awesome.
Other council members? I would just like to second that. I participated in two different events, and thank you for all of your support. And then also, you know, just kudos to our city and our county for really working with the unfortunate drowning of this little boy and everything that everybody worked together on. I know that was hard for everyone, so thank you all very much. Further comments?
Motion to adjourn.
Second it.
We have a motion from Councilmember Gockner and a second from Councilmember Stevens to adjourn. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.